Sure.
So after reports. Are we putting it before or after reports?
Um, I'll just put it before reports.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
K three.
K three, yeah.
Mark has the flat out.
Oh, okay.
It's spread out.
Sorry, sorry, Dan. I know you want to. I didn't. I'm asking that he's gone, but just because I wanted.
There's a bank in California not doing.
Yes. I didn't know if you wanted us to talk about that. You need to ask for candy impact.
But I understand everything's could be okay because it's.
I just realized Doug is planning to be on the Menards item.
Oh, yeah. He said he was gonna have one here, but. That's so appreciative.
We say that. Sorry for the delay. We're making a couple of last minute adjustments to the agenda and I just wanted to notify people, but we'll call meeting to order at 7:03. Begin with a roll call and then the pledge of allegiance.
Hathaway.
Present.
Palmer.
Present.
Flinttoft, present, Brazil, absent, Carrie.
Present.
Noel.
Present.
Riser.
Present.
We have quorum.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands our nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as strong.
Next is the adoption of the agenda and I see your hand raised. I would like to make a couple of quick changes and then I will call in trustee Noel. So some of you may know we're pulling or we pulled or will pull J one and J two from the agenda. That goes to the items that deal with Heritage Woods. And we'd like to add to reports, a report from Alan Hunt of Sheriff's Office at the top of reports. And prior to reports, we were, we will move, I would propose that we move the Menards zoning, rezoning request to immediately following the consent agenda. So K three will move from new business to a special place just before reports. And the reason we're doing that is that there's a representative or representatives from Menards who've flown here to be present for the meeting and they cannot stay until we would ordinarily reach that part of the agenda. That. I think we'll get there before that. Trustee Noel.
Yes, I would like to pull G three from the consent agenda.
Okay. That would move it to new business. So we'll add that to.
After K five.
After K five. Okay. Are there any other modifications to the agenda? In that case, is someone prepared to move approval of the agenda as amended?
I would move the agenda.
I'll support.
So we have motion by riser, support by Noel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Supposed. The agenda is approved. That moves us on to communications to the board of trustees.
They're all enclosed. No comments.
Okay, and we are at public comment. And this is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the board of trustees. We hear first from those in the room and then we turn to those who are participating remotely. Ready to be our timer? Trustee Riser, looks like you are preparing. All right. Please come forward if you are here to speak during public comment. Yes, come up to the table, have a seat.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Will Weber and I'm the chair of the Land Preservation Commission. And I would like to talk to you about the cost allocation element of the budget. I know you all know that the members of the LPC are volunteers. I think take a moment to appreciate what extraordinary expertise the township benefits from with the efforts of these people. Efforts and expertise in agriculture, finance, sustainability, biology, law. So we feel we're really undertaking an important role in the township and contributing to the preservation of land. And we feel that we have a responsibility to the taxpayers, particularly those who voted for extending the millage, which is now going to run for 12 more years, to make the very most of the money that's entrusted to us to spend on their behalf. It's a different kind of a operation than other elements of the township's governance because we are relatively independent with respect to absorbing most of the costs that we incur in carrying out our duties. There's maybe referred to as indirect costs when the township incurs them, but things like legal advice, cost of surveys, cost of titles. We have a consultant who draws no benefits from the township. We have no paid employees. We work, of course, at the discretion of the board who basically approves our expenses and the treasurer, finance department cuts, as it was last year, 51 checks. Now, according to the cost allocation plan and memo that most of you received, I believe, on February 28th, there is a suggestion that we be charged our share of the reallocated costs that comes to $39,000. Now, it's fair to say that we're not paying for buildings and grounds, the township hall, the things that we are covering directly. In fact, that $39,000 includes about $1,400 for a projected audit and exactly $37,985 to finance. Now, 51 checks, it's on the same spreadsheet, that amounts to $744 per check, which to me seems like an unreasonable cost for us to have to pay. I think we're all in favor of the township finding the right way to share costs. Language used in this memo to justify the newly, new cost allocation formula that's been proposed to you includes proportional, legally justified, fair across all funds, evidence-based, and a variety of other languages that make you think that it's fair, but it's not fair when we have to pay that much. For example, our sister fund, the Pass Preserves and Pathways, is only allocated a total of $30,000. They do have a full-time employee. They have an office. They have technology. And they have also an assessment. It happens that their fund is not as large as ours. I think the reason that we're being charged so much seems to go to the size of our balance fund, which we need to maintain in order to have credibility when we enter into negotiations for new purchases, when we talk with our partners and are able to demonstrate an ability to pay our share of what's proposed for us. So I know my time is up. I just want to say I think this really needs to be rethought in terms of how much we're being assessed for cost allocation.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment?
I'd like to speak on Encore Heritage Woods Village. My name, that's at the development on the corner of 94 and Baker Road on Northwest Corner. My name's Eugene Kett. I own the property to the south of that. It borders at least 2,000 feet of my property. This board gave preliminary approval, as per Doug Luan, based on a theory that the neighbors would be able to agree on the terms of the Boulevard Agreement. Township attorney Jim Fink stated in a planning meeting that if he were on the board that he wouldn't let this discrepancy affect his vote on the project and that should, it should be up to the neighbors to agree on the terms of the agreement. Final planning came at the planning meeting with approval, but the contingency that the developer worked with the neighbors on the Boulevard. The developer, their attorney, not bending an inch. One-sided agreement. This is how it is. This is how it's gonna go. And this board was gonna have the ability to give, give full approval of this tonight. One of the terms on this is the final PUD addresses future commercial access to the Boulevard. Declaration of easements, covents, conditions for Encore Heritage Woods Village, general provision, section one. At the time of the recording of this declaration, it is anticipated that the commercial property adjacent to the Baker Road would be developed at some point in the future. We entitled to use portion of the Boulevard, provided however that such parcels be required to pay a proportionate share of the expense of maintenance, repair, and replacement of Heritage Woods Boulevard. Share would be based on traffic impact statement by licensed transportation engineer or other reasonable means to determine its reasonable share as to be determined by the declarant, the developer, in its sole discretion, sole discretion. I have again, in its sole discretion. Dave Spicer, my friend, my neighbor, who normally speaks before I do, when I'm, you know, kind of warm you guys up and it gets me a little warm and fuzzy to be able to get up there and speak, he had a stroke.
Oh, my God.
He, he's, he's okay. He's speaking. His, some of his left side came back. He can't use his hand. He might not ever be able to write again. That's how this one-sided BS has affected him and I feel it myself, but not to that extent. I don't think this is fair at all to let this development come through and monopolize and manipulate the future use of my property. Thank you very much.
I've got a presentation. Here we go. Hi, I'm Kathleen Brand, SIO taxpayer. I want to talk about an item on the agenda, Park Road Engineering for that. Now, I don't have a dog in the fight over paving Park Road, but I do have a big dog in the fight over who pays for it. So I want to talk about the grant and it's not allowed for road engineering. In a dialogue with a trustee, an opinion was expressed that that grant could only be used for pathways. It could not be used for roads. Could only be used for pathways, hence the grant cannot be used for road engineering. This is a copy of portion of that agreement. And this is the, the trustee opinion was based on this specific language. The purpose of this agreement is to provide a safe connection between the business corridor and a regional non-motorized pathway. Safe connection is not walking in the road. So I'll be interested to see if that trustee sticks to that opinion tonight. I also want to talk about Parkwood in regards to the Trailwoods, the development agreement. This is just a copy of it, front page, signed in September 2015. That agreement has some obligations. And first, it talks about the developer taking reasonable measures to reduce dust by trucks traveling. And it may include installing brine on the roads. So this whole consternation with all the folks on Park Road that they have dusty roads. We haven't held the developers' feet to the fire for what their obligations are. That would have helped a lot. There's also further obligations in the agreement with the Washtenaw County Road Commission. This is their signed road improvement agreement. And what it says in here is in addition, Biltmore, who is the developer, desires to participate in future assessment district improvement projects as outlined below. And they specifically call out Park Road to pay Park Road from Cedar Ridge to to Zeb Road. They have made an agreement to participate in the cause for that. And this agreement was signed by Roy Townsend. There are additional obligations in that development agreement. And some of these are past due. So there's a timeframe for which they were supposed to start this pavement, paving. In the first phase, it was supposed to start 18 months after construction. That time is well passed. And it specifies they're supposed to pave Stabler Road from Sedgewood to a point south of there. Further, it says that once they start phase two, within another 18 months, there we're supposed to pay Park Road, including Stabler Road, to 200 feet east of Cedar Ridge. And they were supposed to also start working on the structures.
You're at 3:30, Kathy.
Thank you. I've got one slide. So these are all, all content that comes right out of the agreements. So my question is, why aren't these obligations being brought forward when funding is discussed? Why is nobody talking about these obligation? And who from the board is going to take responsibility for fulfilling, fulfilling those obligation? Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Who else is present who would like to speak during public comments?
Good evening. Roy Townsend, 5940 Cedar Ridge Township. I'd like to talk a little about discussion item, unfinished business, J three, Sal Ridge Road, Uplands Drive, sidewalk extension and bus stop improvements. This is a project, I guess, when I looked at a lot of infrastructure projects, I think this fits the bill because it serves the purpose of a lot of things. For one, there's important subdivisions that were built 20 plus years ago. For some reason, they were never connected with a sidewalk. So this is an opportunity to connect these subdivisions so people can actually walk. So if Joey wants to visit Bobby or Suzie, he can safely walk to those subdivisions. Right now, there's no, there's ditches. There's no safe way for people to connect. Also, in the subdivisions, there's a park back in the one, there's a preserve back in the one. So we have a parks, pathway and preserves village. So it fits the bill for all three of those. So you can connect, so people can actually walk to these safely. There's also a bus route, AAA TA bus route on this road, Uplands and Sal Ridge. So right now, people, kids, high school kids are dropped off. They walk in the road to get home every day. And I've seen it out there. I've been out there numerous times. And also, young moms with their kids in strollers, they walk in this area. And it's unsafe situation. And then during the winter, when the road commission plows with snow, people actually have to stand in the road to catch the bus. So what this project is, we're looking at trying to do is put some curb and gutter, put some underground drainage, put some sidewalks in, put some bus stops. We've worked with AATA and this board and the rec board and back then it was TAP approved of engineering contract, Washington Engineering, a year ago to start this work. And now they're at a point that we want to, you know, actually go out to construction. So make these improvements. The good thing is, this road funding, our, the road fund, SAD, this was a project that was in the original list and a lot of those projects in that original list, we've gone back to them, most of them twice. This would be the second time in this project. So there's road funding available, there's parts of pathway and preserves money available, there's bus money available. The bus fund, I just looked, you have 200% funding, years funding, 200% funding in there. So between those three funds, I think it's a great opportunity is how often do you have three pots of money that all have money? Split it up, divide it, however, ideally figure out how much the bus stop work is, how much is the sidewalks, how much is the road work? Split that out, get it bid. But I just see, this is a huge safety concern. I mean, if you go out there and you see, and see kids walking either in the shoulder, in the ditch, in the winter time, walking in the road, I just think it just makes so much sense. Like, how can we combine all these things into a perfect opportunity? We actually have parks, reserves and pathways that we connect all this. Ultimately, there's a goal of trying to connect these communities, the city of Ann Arbor, the library over there, the ice skating, this is the soccer. Phase one is just connecting these three subdivisions together, making it safe for the people that safely can walk between those three. Like I said, this project's been around for quite a while. There's nothing new, but just like you say, those three things on this project. So thank you.
I just had a question for you or Hannah for J three that Roy was talking about. What we have in our packet is still the original agreement from a year ago and not the plans from Washtenaw Engineering. So if anybody has anything else to hand out, just a heads up, we don't have any information, but I see a big piece of paper. So you can give me hope there. Okay.
Hi, I'm Rita Clundmore. I just wanted to follow up with what Roy was talking about because, I mean, anyone can go out to this intersection and just sit there for a minute and check things out. I live on a dirt road. There's no sidewalks and the kids walk in the road. But the speed limit is not what it is in this neighborhood. This neighborhood is set up with cars are flying through there. The bus stop literally is like next to the stop sign. There's absolutely nowhere to stand. If you were in a wheelchair, you're gonna be sitting and literally in the road at the intersection. It's just, you know, it's a precedent I wouldn't want to set where we go around putting sidewalks in, all these neighborhoods that are being developed. But I think that that should happen. It should be part of the development plan. Talk about PUDs. There's your PUDs. But I think that because this was done and there's no reason to point fingers and blame anyone at this point. This is old stuff. This is not new stuff. All of this stuff was approved by the board last year, probably previous, before that even. But anyway, if you go drive to the intersection and make an observation, you can see what we're talking about. There's literally nowhere to walk. There's just ditches and the kids are on the road. The cars are going like 45 miles an hour. It's just not set up to be safe. There's just nowhere to be. And again, if you were on crutches or if you were in a wheelchair, it's just crazy. There's nowhere, no way to be there. It's just not safe. So I just wanted to follow up with what he talked about.
Thanks, Rita. Hand this out to Rob. Oh, thank you.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment? If there is no one else present who would like to speak during public comment, then Carrie, I would turn to you to see who would like to speak remotely.
We have Jonathan Greenberg followed by Rob Petz. Jonathan, you can go ahead.
Hi, and good evening. Can y'all hear me now?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. So as the head of the Park Road Coalition to prevent 24/7 storage in our neighborhood, I would like to have five minutes of your time. I think it was very clear that the people of Ann Arbor, of SIO Township, especially the closest neighbors, said no very clearly and showed up in numbers at the, the plan commission meeting, or I'm sorry, zoning, whatever the meeting was, where there was no decision made. I love Menards. I shop there. I've shopped there since they opened. It's a wonderful store. But we do not want 24/7 storage facilities in our neighborhood. There are actually quite a few people that feel the same as I, that couldn't attend. But I do want to let you know that there's a very strong dislike about the way that the notifications went out and the communication from the attorney at Menards at the time of that meeting was fairly hostile to our opinion. It was not a pleasant meeting. I'd like to request another five minutes to speak to you as the head of the SIO Township Organization for the Further Return of Our Money. There is a SAD that is now, is now due to the people of SIO Township. If the board does the right thing, you will refund the $1.6 million that is owed to the residents of SIO Township. Further, I would like to request a return of the money that I was forced to pay in 2015 in order to close out a, the SAD for the Trailwoods neighborhood. Forcing me to pay that out for the rest of the seven years was unfair and I now understand illegal. I would like to request another five minutes as the head of the, thank you, Ryan Yapple. Thank you so much for warning us about the potential issues that could happen with credit squeeze. That was a remarkably well-timed warning. Congratulations, Donna, in taking his advice. That was, I'm glad we got out of that. I don't know how the impact of its having in share value would have impacted us, but congratulations, Ryan. That was, that was great. And finally, thank you Chief Hood for taking care of a illegal fire today. And following up, it was the type of service that one would hope they would have in a neighborhood. So thank you very much and thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Thanks, Jonathan. Next is Rob Petz. Rob, go ahead.
I've gotten some SIO Township. I have an announcement that I got an email from the card group, from Roger Rails Card Group, that Debbie Dingle is having a Western Washtenaw Town Hall in Chelsea, Michigan at 311 South Main Street in the municipal building, the day after tomorrow, Thursday, from 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM. And they are going to be there to listen and hear about what issues are in Western Washtenaw County associated with Gelman and many other issues. Also, I would like to remind this board that the Somerset Group, when they bought American Broach and the properties along West Delhi, they paid over $700,000 for some of those properties when they wanted to develop the dealership section in that area. And it was disheartening to watch the developer of Heritage Woods steamroll the residents and neighbors of their property. And I hope you take that into consideration when you're considering this Heritage Woods proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Rob. Next is Margaret Smallwood, followed by Chris Chang. Margaret, you can go ahead.
Oh, hello. My name is Margaret Smallwood, 22-year resident of SIO Township, specifically in the Ravines neighborhood. I am the president of our HOA and I want to thank Roy and Rita for so eloquently discussing what I wanted to discuss today. That's issue J three, the SIO Ridge Road and Upland Drive sidewalks, extension and the bus stop. So I won't go over all, they literally took all the words right out of my mouth. I do want to add that on top of it being unsafe for all the children and the moms walking their kids. My husband and I take the bus quite often and it's dangerous. That bus stop is dangerous. It's also dangerous for the drivers. Twice this week, under bad weather, I've almost hit walkers walking along that easement. So again, I'm in support of the restructuring and rebuilding of sidewalks, crosswalks and proper bus stops. So again, I'm in support of the restructuring and rebuilding of sidewalks, crosswalks and proper bus stops. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Margaret. Next is Chris Chang, followed by David Reed. Chris, you can go ahead. Chris, are you still with us?
How do you unmute?
There we go. I'm unmuted now. Thank you. Good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Chris Chang. I live at 1244 Timmins Drive, which is in the Hometown Village subdivision, which is very, very close to where the Upland and the Siow Ridge sidewalks are being proposed. Yep, I think the previous three speakers, Margaret, Roy and Rita absolutely captured the issues out there perfectly. So I don't want to probably repeat all of the safety concerns they have. I'll just give you a little bit of personal insight. I also take Route 26 and 29, which is the ATA bus from my home to downtown Ann Arbor regularly. It is very unsafe walking in the shoulder of the roads. I see it when we actually go to Pioneer High School, the park and ride lot and pick up students. And they're dropped off there at Upland Drive and I see them get off, walking into the shoulder of the road to their respective households. So speaking from experience, when it's dawn or it's the sun starts to set or there's glare, I can tell you when you're walking in the shoulder of the road, it is a very unsafe access for pedestrians. And I'm really hoping that this somehow gets accomplished. We'll find a solution because I'd hate to see an accident out there. I think it's something that's waiting to happen. And you know, I'm also on the planning commission and PPP. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to talk about this with them and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next is David Reed. David, go ahead.
Yes, David Reed, Siow Township. I see in the board packet that the board is budgeting approximately $750,000 from Fund 400 for some unnamed projects. It's, I think, 600,000 to the road commission, 150,000 for engineering. And I just want to remind the board that several attorneys have told us, and I think including the township's attorney, Mr. Homier, that projects cannot be added after the role has been set. Projects cannot be added to the township-wide roads SAD project list. So to add sidewalks and crosswalks and bus stops and ditching and culverts to the project list, you're not allowed to do that. So all are valid under Act 88, 188, but they have to be there when the project list is approved. And you, they weren't there and so you, you cannot add them. So the only thing that's left to do on the project list is a gravel lift for Park Road from Stabler to Zeeb. We've already done two gravel lifts on Park Road from Stabler to Liberty. And there were two of them and the total of that cost was 170,000 dollars. We had allocated 207,000 dollars for Park Road. So what's left is around 60, 67,000 dollars, which can be spent on Park Road, but that's it of the 1.6 million dollars. All the other projects have been done. And you can't add projects to the list according to Act 188 and according to nearly every attorney that you talk to, including Mr. Homier. So one more thing regarding local SADs. We're all told that if you improve your road with a local SAD, it should take care or should improve your, your property values, your taxable value. This year, we, or excuse me, last year, we improved Merlin Way to the tune of almost a quarter of a million dollars. Actually, it was 234,000 dollars. Each of us got assessed to 23,400 dollars. I have two parcels, so I have two of those anchors to carry this for this year, for the next 10 years. Interestingly enough, one of my parcels, which is undeveloped, their taxable value went up by 2100 dollars, which almost matches the one tenth of that 23,000, which is 2,340 dollars. Interestingly enough, though, the parcel that my house is on went down by 6100 dollars. So I have to ask, how is an SAD providing a special benefit to me when my property values have gone down? So once again, township spent $3 million in the township and my, my parcel didn't get any special benefit from that. So you have to be very careful by using an Act 188. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David. There are no more.
We'll move on to approval of the minutes. We have one set of minutes. This is for the regular meeting of February 28th, 2023. And in the interest of time, I would just ask, are there any corrections to the minutes from that meeting? And then I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes, the draft minutes as presented.
So move.
So moved by riser, support by Palmer. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed. Minutes are approved. That brings us to the consent agenda. There are two items, payment of payments, payment of the bills and a, an appointment to, or two appointments, I guess, to the Parks, Preserves and Pathways Committee. Someone appeared to move the consent agenda.
I would move the consent agenda.
All right. With the exception of the one she pulled, I guess. Yes, that's why there's only two items. Yeah. Okay. So we have a motion by riser, support by Carrie, all those in favor. Oh, I'm sorry. We have a roll call because it's payment of the bills.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
That brings us to the item that we moved up from new business. That's item K three. This is Menards rezoning. So we have with us a representative from Menards and is Doug Luwan? Yes, okay. I started. Well, Doug, if you would introduce this and then we'll turn to the applicant.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Doug Luwan, I am the planning consultant for Siow Township. And just wanted to say a few words before the applicant talks about their proposal. Just so the township board has an idea of what, what it is that we are being, what we're looking at tonight. This is a rezoning from C two to I one. So that's general commercial to limited industrial. Now, it's, it's a little different of a rezoning that we typically get because it is a, what's called a conditional rezoning. And what that means is the applicant has agreed to place conditions upon himself to limit the uses that can occur on, on the property. So for example, in a straight rezoning, a piece of property, if, if, if the township board were to rezone this to I one, any use, any use within the I one zoning district, any manufacturing use, storage use, office use could occur at this, at the site. And the rezoning really can't limit the use in a straight rezoning. In a conditional rezoning, the applicant may place conditions upon themselves to the type of use that can occur here. And the applicant has done that in this case. They have proposed a condition and that condition is very strict, actually, in that only self-storage could occur if it was rezoned to I one. So what the applicant is requesting is a conditional rezoning to I one that would allow only self-storage, mini-storage on the site. Now, as far as the process goes from this point, so the planning commission has made a recommendation of denial to, of this request to the, to the township board. Township board obviously should consider the applicant's recommendation. You are the final deciding body. The applicant has decided to come in front of the township board, understanding that they have a recommendation of denial from the planning commission, but wanted to come forward. Anyway, some, sometimes applicants will pull their request after if a planning commission denies it, but in this case, they wanted to be heard by the township board as well. So if the township board were to recommend approval of this project or this rezoning, there are still two pretty major steps that would have to occur. The first is that the applicant would still have to obtain conditional use approval for a self-storage facility in the light industrial district, which is another public hearing. And then after conditional use approval, they'd have to submit a site plan. So if it was, if the plan, if the township board was to recommend approval of this tonight, there's still quite a, two additional steps that would take place. One of those having a public hearing. So if this is approved, you're not approving the start of construction. You're only approving the zoning and then the applicant would then have to take the normal steps for the rezoning at that point. So that's kind of the background. That's really what the township board is being faced with tonight is the request of a conditional rezoning as opposed to a straight rezoning. And if there's any questions about the process, I'd be happy to try to answer those to the township board. And then after, I think the applicant is done with his presentation, I've, I can go through some, some of our comments that we've also provided to the planning commission, if the board would like me to do that.
Thanks, Doug. Please proceed.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nick Brunner. I'm a real estate representative for Menards. Address for the record is 5101 Menard Drive, Oakdale, Wisconsin. Mr. Loon took a couple of my talking points here, so I'll regroup here. But essentially, yeah, we are, Menards is looking to construct a self-storage facility on the land east of the store. So to put in perspective, Menards owns about 60 acres out there of what, you know, the store sits on about 20. We have about another 20 for all lots on the west side of the store and to the north of the store. This request here is really only being applied to the 14 acres to the east of the store. It's a really thin piece of property that actually sits behind industrial and commercial uses along Jackson Road to the north. And it's, it's really about 200 feet in width. So it's not a very wide piece of property, you know, but it's, it's long. So we've, we've always struggled with trying to find a use for this property because of those characteristics. So when we started getting into the self-storage field a couple of years ago, we identified this as a potential site and we, we looked at all the available property we have around our store and thought this was going to be the best fit because the other pieces of property are prime for commercial development. That's what we want to leave them for. You know, it's a better benefit and better use for the township, but this property back here really isn't commercial in nature. Even though it's zoned that way, it's all part of the same parcel as the Menard store. So that's why it's zoned that way. That's why the master plan is all the same way. But that's essentially why we're here, you know, why we're requesting in this particular property. We looked at the rest of the property and thought it fit here best. A little bit about the self-storage facility, we do a little bit differently than everyone else. We actually put perimeter sheds around the entire, sheds around the entire perimeter and we face the units inside. So the back of those perimeter sheds act as a fence. So where you can see a lot of self-storage units, where you can see the doors, you don't see that in our facility. You see the back of the units, which means this is completely secured. There's no way to get into this facility except for the, the gate. And the gate looks like the Menards gate where it's, you know, it got a couple of overhead doors. You type your code in, doors go up and you can get in the facility. It's the only way in and out of the facility and it really helps keep the thing secured. Lighting is minimal. It's inside the facility again, not facing out because all our units faces in. So there's no light pollution. It's a low traffic generating use. It's a low noise generating use. And what's really great about this use and what we're seeing too is it is a fantastic buffer because of those reasons between higher intensity uses of commercial and industrial, like we see on the north side, south of Jackson and the Menard store to the west. It really buffers really well to residential, whether that be to the south, to the west or wherever. It's, it's a great buffer use for that property because of that low intense use. And just touching base on some of the comments, you know, from the neighbors that we got at the planning commission hearing. We did get a couple from the west side of the Menard store. I, I think, and that's part of the reason I wanted to clarify what parcel we're actually talking about. Because the parcel we're talking about, the people on the west side to the west of the store, they're not going to even know those things here because they won't see it over the store. They won't see it over the yard. It is tucked behind the commercial uses in front. So they're not even going to know those things there. The people to the south, the residential to the south, I have a map here. I sent it yesterday. I don't know if it made its way to you. But essentially what we did is we took an aerial and we showed you how far this unit is away from the closest house in the residential. And we're over 780 feet away. So we're over two football fields away from the closest residential house today from the self-storage facility. Yep, go ahead. Yeah, absolutely. And you can take, you can take both of these with. I'll touch base on this one too. So and then within that 780 feet, what you have is you have evergreens and landscaping that the subdivision has planted. You have the subdivision pond, detention pond. You have Honey Creek, plus all the natural landscaping that's still in place around Honey Creek. You have the Menards detention pond. You have the new detention ponds for the self-storage facility. And we are also proposing to plant evergreen trees 25 feet on center to the south, along the south property line of the self-storage units that will help buffer and create it so that if you're in that south subdivision, you're not going to be able to see this thing. Just put in perspective, these units are 10 feet tall. When we plant those pine trees, they're going to be five, six, seven feet tall. In a couple of years, they're going to grow taller than the units will be. 25 feet on center, they're going to grow well into each other in a couple of years. So if you're able to see past the landscape and the subdivision has, the landscaping of Honey Creek, past our ponds and to our evergreens, there's not going to be anything left to see. So again, we're, we're really taking into account what the neighbors wanted, making sure we can't see this. I think that landscaping plan will help solidify any of the worries they had. And again, through the low intensive use of the nature of the self-storage facility, they're not going to hear it, not going to see it anyways. But we wanted to make sure that we really put an emphasis on making sure we're shielding whatever it is that they're concerned about from their properties. And then just to go off of that, the master plan for this particular parcel is mixed-use commercial. Going through it, it says that the intent of mixed-use commercial is to provide a mix of commercial, office, industrial and high-density residential. I always consider self-storage more commercial nature because we are providing a service and people are buying it. Plus, it's part of our store, which is commercial. Some people might lean, say it's more industrial in nature. But either way, it's covered on what the desired uses of mixed-use commercial is. Plus, if the mixed-use plan or the master plan also says, gives you some zoning, what they want this to be zoned as, C two being the preferred one, but I want also be inappropriate. So the request that we're having today, I feel falls, is consistent with the master plan. I think there was a little bit of confusion from that perspective at the planning commission as well. So I just wanted to touch base on that. And then finally, one of the other things that was said at the planning commission was, is there a need for self-storage? There are six units, five facilities already within the area. It's a good point. We do our research on this as well. We want to be proposing a project if we didn't feel there was a need. Just not very good business judgment there. So what we do is nationally is a rule, general rule of thumb that to be sufficiently supplied in terms of self-storage, about 10 square feet of self-storage per person within a certain radius, a mile radius. So for instance, you know, there are six self-storage facilities within five miles of the site we're proposing. But there are 51,000 people within that five-mile radius. So if you take all the square footage of those six self-storage facilities divided by the 51,000 people, you're at 7.2 feet, square feet of storage per person, which is significantly under the 10 square feet. That's kind of the general rule of thumb that says that a community is adequately served. So when you get under eight square feet, that means the community is being underserved in terms of storage, meaning there's a demand for storage that if you call around, the units are full, facilities are full, people are wanting more storage. So when we see in this area, 7.2, that is a great indicator for us that there is a need for self-storage. And that is part of the reason why we're proposing the project here tonight is to help service this community the best way we possibly can. So that was a lot of information. I talked pretty quickly there. You know, at, at the end of the day, you know, we like being here. We enjoy this community. This community's been great for us. Ever since we've been here for the last, I think it's been about eight years now. So we're still relatively new, but we're excited for what the future brings. We are just here. We are just here again, trying to provide another service to the community, this project, we're looking at probably four million dollars worth of investment. Into this community in a piece of property that we really don't know what it can be used for in its current state. If we are forced to go down the commercial route, you know, then we'll have to look at seeing what kind of alternatives we can do. I mean, there's a number of commercial uses that would be allowed, you know, grocery stores, medical offices, vets, things like that. That are probably more intensive than a, a self-storage. But they would require a bigger depth, so we would have to probably look at taking the Menards pond and moving it to the east or putting it underground. Which honestly means that we're going to get closer to the residential to the south, so you know, this plant here. Is, is really the best of both worlds, is a low-intense use, a lot lower intensity than what some permitted uses are. But it's also keeping that pond and that buffer really there and keeping us away from the residential use. So that is our preferred, I think it would be most people's preferred route to the south of us. But you know, that's, that's why we're here, I'm just trying to propose another project and. And honestly, I, I look for your opinions and, and your thoughts and. Would be happy to, you know, if there's any questions you have for me or anything that we can do to try to make this project happen, you know, I, I'm, I'm all ears. You know, whatever I can do.
Doug, you said if. We turn to you, you would provide us with a few more comments from. Either, I guess, from your memo, I'm not sure what you were referring to.
Yeah, just to kind of, if, if the township board would like, I could go over some of our review comments, I mean, you have them in your packet. So I guess I'll leave that up to you if you'd like me to go over some of those comments.
Well, I guess, one question I have is. You, the sense I had is that your conclusion was that this was. The best alternative. What other alternatives did you consider in terms of use of this space? What were you comparing it to?
Yeah, I, I don't know that I said it was the best alternative, but I'll, I'll, I'll give you my, my general thoughts. You, you have my report, so I guess I won't go into detail unless the board would like me to on, on our report. But I, when I look at the, the uses that are permitted. Within the underlying zoning district, so the underlying zoning district currently is C2 general commercial. And there, there are, you know, it, it's all of the things you would think that would be permitted in this, in the commercial district, any kind of retail. Commercial office, those sorts of things, you know, the kind of business that you see up and down Jackson Road. And then you look at the location of this little finger, and by the way, I think the applicant mentioned it. But it's important to note that. The rezoning is for a fourteen point eight acre parcel. That is that eastern finger, for lack of a better term. That extends to the directly east of Menards. The frontage on Stabler in the frontage that's vacant. On Jackson has, is, is not part of what the applicant is proposing, that will stay. In its current commercial configuration. And likely be developed in outlots in some, at some point in the future. This is for that piece that is bounded by the Menard, the actual Menard store. To the west, some commercial and industrial properties to the north. And then the Honey Creek development to the south and then to the east is more industrial. So be partly, I kind of, I guess I look at this a little different. Than maybe some of the folks that came out and talked about this. In my experience, self-storage is one of, if not the most. Low-intense commercial uses that you could have, that would have almost no. Impact or disturbance to an adjacent residential property. The, the, the units themselves are relatively small. Traffic is almost negligent, is negligible, the amount of traffic that self-storage creates. Or the size of property that it is. They create almost no noise. And so, and almost no lighting, so. And, and what could happen here with, imagine a commercial business just north of. The Honey Creek development. Trail, you know, the, the residential development in the south. You know, imagine parking and parking lot lights and businesses and things that could in theory cause disruption. So I kind of looked at this maybe a little different, that this is a use that. Would cause almost no disruption to the residences to the south and be somewhat complimentary to Menards to the east. And in, you know, also be a good transition from the commercial and industrial property to the north. So without getting into the details of my review. You know, those are, those are kind of the, those are sort of the base thoughts that I had as I, as I reviewed this project. And as you see in our review, we did recommend approval of this, of this rezoning. Partly because of the applicant's condition that it could only be self-storage. So, yeah, I don't, you know, there's always some use that could be proposed that. You know, someone could consider better, I don't know that I would say this is the best use, but I think this is a use that's. That's pretty, pretty low, low intense for, for a use in this part of the township and. In my opinion, would seem compatible with what's going on around it, so I don't know if that answered your question. Supervisor Hathaway, but that's, if, if I could clarify, I'll try to do that.
I think you did, are there other questions or comments, trusty Noel?
So I have a couple of questions. In reviewing the comments from the planning commissioners, there were comments to the effect that. This rezoning request is at odds with the Scioto Township master plan. And I think that you were sort of trying to address that a few minutes ago, but tell me why. Residents felt this was at odds with the master plan.
I, I can't speak on behalf of the residents, but I, I heard that and I, I pulled up the, the pages of the master plan that applied to. Mixed-use commercial and that's where I, when I was talking about. What uses are, that can be there and it's, you know, the commercial, the light industrial uses, which the self-storage fits in both of those. And also it tells you what zonings are appropriate and I1 zoning, along with the C2 it is today, both are appropriate. For a mixed-use future land plan, so I honestly, I'm not quite sure why it was felt that it didn't mesh with the master plan, but. You know, based on my reading of it, I, I feel like it, it does, so.
In fact, there was a planning commissioner who said that.
Whether it's planning commissioner or resident, I'm not, I can't, I don't, I don't know the underlying reasons for the comment, I just, I heard that and that's why I went back and read it. Why I mentioned it tonight.
So that is a concern for me that this possibly doesn't. Is at odds with the master plan and isn't consistent with the master plan. And I don't have, I didn't do independent research on it, but a planning commissioner made that comment.
I have, if you want, I have, I mean, I don't know, if you probably don't want to read it, but I have it right here, but.
Doug, can you address that?
Well, I think, I think that is, I think that's a good, I think that's a good concern that Kathy has. We mentioned it in our report that it doesn't exactly meet the master plan because the master plan is calling for it to be commercial. But to the applicant's point. It is also a mixed-use commercial district that envisions potentially industrial or even high-density residential. So it might be worth a little additional. Exploring on that, and if, if, if the township board, if that's something that is holding. Or that's something that you want a clearer, you know, a clear definition on. I, I could, I could do a little additional digging in that as well and provide some additional information to township board. But I, I think that's a, you know, a very good comment, a valid comment.
Please.
Doug?
Yes.
You mentioned that this is a conditional rezoning, not. The status quo rezoning, which limits. Menards is limiting what can be put on there. And they explained the why for this proposal. So what everyone is saying is yes, but they're asking for a conditional rezoning.
Yes.
And what I've seen of Menards, not just in this state, but I've been in Wisconsin, been in their stores there. They live up to what they say, their stores are clean. That's, it's amazing how they can do what they do in the kind of business. They keep their word, at least it looks like that, they can't add that kind of a store without maintaining. Their status quo and the way they feel. That's my comment, it's a good, I think it's a good idea and it's limiting, that's a big question, it's limiting.
Um, yeah, thank you, it's a very good presentation and it's a, you know, unusual item because we had our planning consulting. Consultants supporting it and our planning commission recommended against it six to one. And so I am compelled, looking at the record here from the planning commissioners' comments. And the six to one vote, it wasn't a four-three vote, it was a six to one vote. And so I'll be supporting their recommendation to deny. A couple of things that resonate with me is one, the concern from neighbors about a twenty-four-seven facility, I understand that. And, and that is valid and, and secondly is we're talking about a hypothetical alternative that is not before us tonight. Tonight we just have one option to say yes to this or to do nothing, so for tonight, gonna be opposing it.
No?
I wasn't done before.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, it's okay. Another concern I had was in the. Resolution or motion passed by the planning commission. They stated that this rezoning failed to meet the informational requirements. Of section thirty-four point four, four-six-one, thirty-six point four-six-two. Of the Scioto Township zoning ordinance and maybe you could address that, Doug.
Yeah, I really can't address that without looking up that section.
It was in the planning commission motion, well, okay, that's fine. If you could look that up, I have, I have questions.
You have questions about it too?
And I had one more comment while he's looking that up.
Give me the section again, sorry.
Thirty-six dash four-six-one, thirty-six dash four-six-two. And then my final comment is that. I think there are residents who build homes and trail woods and other neighboring. Developments close to the site who perhaps made the decision to live in the area. Because of what they thought was the surrounding zoning and to now change that. Can present issues for some residents, maybe not all, but for some. So I've got concerns about this and I will not be supporting it.
If I could, I found the sections, so thirty-six dash four-six-one. Is simply information of like the tax ID and things like that. And I think the applicant, as far as I know, did provide that information. Thirty-six four sixty-two are the more discretionary review considerations. That the planning commission has to find and those are things like. The, there's five of them and, and they are, whether or not the requested zoning change is justified by a change of conditions since the original ordinance was adopted. To the precedence and possible effects of such precedents which might result from approval or denial of the petition, these are all things they're supposed to consider. Number three, the capacity of the township or government agencies to provide any service facilities and programs that might be required if it was approved. Number four, effect of approval of the petition on the condition and or value of the property in the township or adjacent civil divisions. And number five, effective approval of petition on adopted development policies of the township and other governmental units. This is, this would be the more critical of those two sections and this is the one that the planning commission said that they did not meet. Or they did not believe it, Matt.
Thank you. Looking at the, well, thank you for this nap, it, it helps, I, I wanted to go out and walk, but it's been. A busy couple of weeks here, so where would? The driveway, it's, assuming that they would drive back there, is there a parking lot back there, this is all parking or?
Yeah, there's a stub already on the, would be the east side of the store, there's a stub there that we would connect it to.
Oh, to Jackson.
Yeah.
Well, there's a, there's a driveway.
We, yeah, we have used, yeah, sorry, we use Menards private drives to get to Jackson.
East of the garden center.
Correct, that's for the stub.
So if this was the zoning to industrial for this storage unit, but if it's already commercial. So there could be restaurants, drive-throughs, I mean, there could be all kinds of things back there. Yeah, more intense uses.
And some of which are twenty-four hours as well.
And that's not being proposed to us tonight.
Yeah, okay, but it's.
But it's allowed by the zoning.
Yeah.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I guess it's just a consideration that, you know, it's part of why self-storage is such an attractive option. Because you know what you're getting with self-storage. Yeah, there's something, you know, a KFC could go in, you know, open twenty-four hours. Deep fried chicken smell the whole time, cars lining up in the drive-through, parking, headlights shining towards the residential, that's permitted. I mean, they just got to go through a site plan review and that's, that, then they're, they're good, you know, so this is kind of like. You know, this is the use, you know, it's low intense and that's the argument we've, we try to make is that. This is why it's such a great use of this property, because you know what it is, it's low intensity, you don't have to worry about some of those more high-intense uses coming in.
Is it twenty-four-seven security or, well, during store hours, there'd be people around, but what about at night?
Yeah, so we have, we have security cameras throughout the entire facility, so we monitor it all and then, yes, the store manager, the store employees are the ones during store hours, so from. You know, six o'clock in the morning to ten o'clock at night, that they will be there present. And they patrol it every day, they, you know, we, we look at it up in Eau Claire, Wisconsin every day. You know, really, it's, you know, the secure nature of the facility is, is, is very good. A lot better than a lot of other ones, I'll tell you that.
Such an odd shaped parcel here.
That's, that's a battle we have faced.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I was on the planning commission when this was, came doing, I was a no vote. But it was a close call no vote and I was a no vote because there could be worse, they could put in a fast food, they could put in something there. So they could do a lot, that's not before today, this is kind of a unique. Unique parcel because it's what I regard as an infill, you've got this little thing out back and. What, what concerned me about it is it's right next to Honey Creek. And what do we want to put next to Honey Creek, not that we couldn't stop a McDonald's from going back there or Chick-fil-A or a lot of other things, so. This is, you know. I just don't want to plan, well, it could be worse, so let's do it. Maybe that's the pill I have to swallow, but I don't know that I'm ready to swallow that tonight. Anyways.
Well, I, I went out today and walked the site and I've walked that stretch before because of, of the pathway that. Runs from Menards down towards the Trailwood subdivision and. And I'm looking forward to when Trailwoods is complete and that pathway makes its way all the way down to Park Road. But right now. What we have there is an empty field and I, I empathize with. The neighbors because it, it, right now, you can see the houses from that empty field and then I drove around. To see what it looked like from where the houses are going to be built. And some of those lots are even closer than the existing houses and you can see the field from there and then. On, on the other hand, I, I hear what our planning consultant has, has said and also what you've said today, Nick and. I get it, you know, you're, you're thinking about that too, you're thinking, well, what's a use that we can make of this parcel of land that we can. uh, sort of tailor to have the lowest impact possible. And I appreciate the fact that you've given a lot of thought to that and that the proposed use and the landscaping that you have in mind for it would aim to achieve that end. But, um, I, I guess I'm just, I too am not persuaded about additional self-storage. I don't know whose figure that is, you know, that every person should have ten square feet of self-storage. I suppose, you know, that would help me to declutter my house, but I'm not using ten feet of self-storage now. And I don't know a lot of people who are. Um, I just, is that like an industry figure or?
Yeah, it's, it's a national industry figure and it's, it's, it's all, it changes and varies from place to place, you know, and, and honestly, like towns like this where you have a major college nearby, that number actually goes up. Because you have a lot of people transitioning from place to place, summertime where storage units are more popular. Um, also higher uses of multifamily. Well, as multifamily is getting more and more popular, storage units are getting more and more popular as well because people don't have basements, they don't have attics, they don't have anywhere to store their stuff. So we're seeing those figures and ten square feet is just a bunch of different studies coming together, um, that kind of came out with a national average and that, that is what we've used and we've used it so far and we've been successful everywhere. We corroborate that by calling self-storage facilities in the area and seeing how full they are and they usually all go, we're jam-packed. Um, so that's, that's where that all comes from. And, and honestly, I appreciate all your comments. I really do. I understand. There's concerns. Um, and if, unfortunately, if this doesn't go the way I would like it, is there any feedback you can give us on what we should be doing with this property? Um, you know, is there a use that you have that's better in mind than this to help us? Because I mean, we're paying, you know, tens of thousands of dollars in real estate taxes every year on this thing and, and we just can't keep sitting on it. So we're motivated to do something with it. If this isn't the use that is, that looks great for everyone, what, can you help guide me a little bit on what I should tell our sales guy to, to, to market for? Or I mean, it's just, I hate being left in the wind a little bit, not knowing what we should do. And I would really appreciate some feedback from.
Well, I would need some time to respond to that, but I would like to respond to it.
It's a nice, flat surface. Um, I honestly, when I looked at it today, I was thinking, gosh, you could play bocce ball here, you know, it's, you know, I, I'm not sure that that would generate the revenue that you're looking for, but, um.
You need a bowling alley. You know, I, I would say, you know, I noted that Chair Calvert-Sinon and John, it sounds like the planning commission had some ideas about maybe engaging Menards in the Jackson Road study and some other things.
Yeah, see, I think that one of the gems of Sienna Township is Honey Creek. And to the extent there could be something that somehow incorporates light, commercial, I don't know, restaurant and Honey Creek, I mean, I, I, I don't know, rather than a twenty-four seven operation so close to a neighborhood, not that a fast food couldn't do that. I don't know that a, I don't know that you could really realistically put a, a KFC back there, uh, open that far off of Jackson Road when Menards itself is closed and get people to go back there. And so it is such a unique, odd infill, infill location that I am not satisfied at tonight that, that a storage unit is the way to go for that infill spot.
You know, it's true. It is a very nice view, um, from there. The, the retention pond has a scenic quality to it with the reeds and the uh, the birds and everything. And the creek is right there. Maybe, maybe a, a restaurant would work there, you know, not something like fast food, but something that, you know, people, you know, were looking for something a little bit more off the beaten track. Um, I mean, those, you have other outlets for the site that would be much more inviting to, I, I would think to, um, sort of high visibility, fast food type of establishment. Um, but, um, if someone was looking for dining experience, you know, sort of out of the way, um, maybe that would work. I don't know.
I think it's too far off the beaten path, just my personal.
Well, um, in order to move us along, um, is someone prepared to make the motion to deny? I, it seems like that's where we're headed.
Um, and I'm just gonna read it just to.
And was he, was he speaking?
Um, I make the motion to deny OA two, two, zero, zero, nine, Menards Self-Storage Conditional Rezoning H zero, eight, two, one, three hundred, zero, one, five. Fortune of from C two general commercial to I one limited industrial for a self-storage use based on the recommendation of the planning commission provided in the minutes of their regular meeting held on January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
I'll support.
We have a motion by Flintoff, support by Noel. Please call the roll.
I, before you do that, we've had a lot of back and forth. Quite, people said that there's more information that they would like. Kathy mentioned that. Wouldn't a better option be to send it back to planning? And then have them go over it again and then do our vote when they bring it back.
I, I, I think the reason that we went send it back to planning is if we thought that planning should reconsider it. And I think planning came down. Well, if planning came down very definitively, um, you know, with its recommendation to deny, I, I think in, in a, in a sense, given how definitive that vote was and, and how um, I, if I'm reading this room correctly, how definitive this vote is likely to be, um, it's better to, rather than delaying things to, um, help Menards sort of pivot to the, to another use for the site. So I, I, I hear what you're saying, uh, Treasurer Palmer, but I, I think probably we're better off just, um, moving this along towards something else, some of the use. Uh, please call the roll.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
No.
Flintoff? Yes. Carrie?
I'm torn.
You have the vote up or down?
I do. Um, I'm torn because I would need to see something busy in there for the residents.
No, no discussion at this point.
I know. Okay, I'm going to, if we could table it.
Uh, yes or no?
I'm gonna have to say no for right now.
All right, we have four yeses and two, hold on. We have four yeses and two nos. Um, motion to deny passes.
Tonight, point of order, I think you said no to the vote or no to the project? Cause the vote was to deny.
Yes, right, correct.
You wanted to, you, you want to deny it?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. That's what I thought too. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So I'd like to go back and, and call the, call the roll again.
Sure.
Okay.
We'll do a do-over.
Okay, let's do a do-over to get that right. So again, the motion is to deny.
Correct.
All right.
So a, a, a yes is in favor of denial.
Yes.
Okay.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
No.
Flintoff? Yes. Carrie?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, five to one, denied.
Thank you for accommodating me. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Same travels.
All right, that brings us to reports. Um, and we would like to have, uh, our Sheriff's Department report or Sheriff's Office Department report first, please.
Good evening, everybody. Up here, so I haven't been to a board meeting in a little while. So there's a couple of new faces, you know, pretty familiar with John and Ms. Carrie. So, uh, currently we have, uh, you guys are contracting for eight deputies and we are filling six of those positions currently. Two are going unfilled. One is a day shift position, one is a midnight position. That's where the bank hours on the report come from. So those, uh, positions that aren't filled, we bank those hours and then we use that for overtime to fill those positions when we need it based on our minimum staffing numbers. Uh, so generally on day shift, we'll have two during the week, one on the weekend afternoon shift. We'll always have two people going. Then on midnight shift, we always have one deputy working at any given time. Uh, and anybody wants to meet and talk about bank dollars and that's like, that's a long discussion. I know we don't have a ton of time here tonight to go and get into that. Uh, but if anybody wants to meet, I'm happy to get with you and we can go into the nitty-gritty on how all that works. Um, we have, like I said, one vacancy on mids, one on days. Uh, we have one deputy that just finished training on afternoon shift and I anticipate he's going to rotate out for another one of our newer deputies uh, here in the near future. And we also have about, I think, four or five deputies that will be getting off training within the next month. Once they get off training, hopefully one of those additional positions that were holding vacant Sienna will get filled. So that when we have the one vacancy, which would likely be just on the day shift. So we'll have two deputies working on mids, hopefully. Uh, but that's, that's to be determined yet. Uh, overall, the sheriff's office vacancy rate in the road patrol is at fifteen point five percent. So we're down sixteen bodies. So as always, if, you know, anybody that's interested in working for the sheriff's office, we're hiring in all aspects, dispatch, corrections, road patrol, uh, all kinds of different opportunities there. Um, uh, let's see, just a couple of major incidents that we've had recently. This one is for, actually, it will be on next month's report because it happened this month. We did have a shot fired incident over on Erie Drive where a subject, probably a narcotics deal was going on, we believe. And one of the subjects ended up firing at one of the other subjects. We were initially called for a man down that was actually shot. We got to the scene and weren't able to locate that person. However, we did locate a vehicle fleeing the area, which turned into a pursuit, which went down nine ninety-four. At which time the person blew a tire and we were able to take the person into custody. So, uh, prosecutor's office has subsequently charged that. We finally located the victim who was walking down Jackson Road. He was not particularly cooperative. Uh, believe it or not. And, uh, we, we do have evidence that shots were fired at the scene. There were shell casings, bullet holes in the apartment complex nearby. Fortunately, nobody was hurt. Um, but we did get numerous felony charges on the subject that was responsible for that particular incident. So uh, we're moving forward on that particular case. The auto dealerships again, uh, because of the high concentration we have on Jackson Road there and the proximity to the highways are always a, a high target potential for criminal activity, especially during the evenings, which had multiple vehicles stolen over the course of the evenings uh, or fraudulent, vehicles purchased fraudulently and then taken to Detroit or whatever, taken, actually taken out of state and then immediately sold. So that then it's difficult to track the people down and it becomes a, a bigger enterprise. We do have our, uh, deputy who is assigned to the state police auto theft task force, who's working on some of those cases for us. He was actually over here today working on a couple of cases that, uh, happened recently. Um, over at the old Quality Sixteen, we recently had a couple of incidents over there where somebody had damaged the vacant property and actually broken in. Uh, so deputies had to clear that facility, which is quite large. So for which had help from the special township, Manchester Township deputies coming in and clearing that big building. Fortunately, uh, it doesn't appear that anything was taken. It was just probably delicious in, in nature, just bored kids or something. Uh, unfortunately, we did have last month, the, probably might've seen it on the news, the missing juvenile fifteen-year-old from uh, our area that we, uh, were looking for. And she was last seen on Pioneer High School's grounds, which is eventually where we located her a couple of days later after she was reported missing. And unfortunately, she was deceased. And with that particular incident, there's no, uh, threat to the public. Ann Arbor is handling the death investigation piece of that case. Uh, we handled the missing person aspect of it. Um, but, uh, we don't believe there's any foul play involved. And so there's, there should be no concerns to the community as far as that particular incident. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Just one question for the report. Um, we were, um, told, I don't know, a few months ago, when we were in contract negotiations that the sheriff's office was going to restart the police services working group at some point in twenty twenty-three. Um, so just interested to know if that was going, if you happen to know any update on that.
I don't have any updates on that specifically, so sorry.
Okay, great.
General question. I've been told that the sheriff's department is down deputies throughout. You just mentioned that. What are the trends like over the last couple of years? Is it stabilizing, going down, going up?
For the road patrol, we've actually gone up slightly. So we've improved a little bit, but every, every law enforcement agency across the state is hunting for people. So I, I teach the police academy and once upon a time, or actually not long ago, you'd maybe see approximately ten percent of the people in the police academy were sponsored by an agency and everybody else was putting themselves through and then trying to get a job. This current, uh, police academy at Washington Community College that is starting here in a few weeks is one hundred percent sponsored. So everybody's going out hunting for people, finding people that think are going to be quality candidates and actually paying them to go to the police academy because we're looking for people that bad. When I go to police academy graduations outside of, uh, WCC here, like when we go to school craft or whatever, and we're, we've actually got, uh, one recruit sponsored in there currently. When we go to those graduations, there will only be a handful of people that are currently not, uh, picked up by an agency at graduation time. And the pool of the administration from all the various agencies that are there, it's like a bunch of sharks with blood in the water. And they see somebody that is not actually hired because we are scrambling to find people. I think part of it's the, some of the political nature of things. Some of it's just the, where we're at, um, the generational differences and how people feel about law enforcement and, uh, how current work trends go. And you know, young, you know, our, our young deputies versus our old deputies, there's definitely a generational gap there. Uh, so there's multiple things that go into it, but we've been working very hard to get that up, especially on the road patrol. The corrections division is struggling even worse because they don't have a pipeline, like, uh, for police services. We at least have a pipeline through the police cadence. We go to every academy in the state and we go out and we present while they're in service and say, hey, this is what you can get if you come to work at Washington County. This is what we can give you as a career. Um, but the corrections division doesn't have that, neither does the dispatch, uh, division. So they have to find people in different ways, which is much more challenging for them. Uh, so it's, it's definitely a tough time for law enforcement, finding people because everybody's fighting for the best people. It's a struggle, big struggle.
I have one. Uh, good evening. Nice to see you again. So we just, uh, redid chapter eight, which is our ordinance with respect to animals, dogs and dogs off leash and biting dogs and barking dogs and dangerous dogs, things like that. Have, have you folks been apprised of our new ordinance as such that if a call comes in about it, you'd kind of be, you'd, you know, you'd?
Mark's coming to talk to me about that tomorrow. It's on our, our list of things to chat about.
Oh, well, I'll sell you a thunderbird. I'll yield.
But we, we do have two ACOs now. That's one thing. In the last year, we went from having one ACO to now we've got two ACOs, one working on day shift, one working on afternoon shift. So we've got more animal control coverage for the entire county, which is good. Again, it's just two people, but at the same time for the volume of animal calls. One, one more is like fifty percent more coverage, so.
I'm sorry, keep your dogs in.
If there aren't any other comments, thank, thank you for joining us and giving your report in person this evening.
Good to see you, everybody.
Thanks so much, Neil.
The other reports, uh, we have one from, uh, Mr. Noel and then we have, of course, the, uh, financial report. Our, I think that's all we have for this evening, unless there are any questions about either of those reports. Well, if you, if you have an oral report, um, go, go for it.
I, I just want to let the citizens know that we have nothing at all, anything to do with the banks issue in California. And I have received, uh, a report or information, memo from our main banks that said that it's nothing that they ever dealt with. So money is good, we can say. Wasn't in that mess.
Thank you. Um, that brings us to our public hearing.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So I owe, um, the board, uh, road advisory committee report. It's been too busy. So could I just give a little bit of an oral report?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. So, um, we met, uh, March first, Wednesday, and the, the big item was, um, Attorney Mike Holmier came and he had a discussion with the, the board or the, uh, committee regarding the three different options for funding the roads in the future. So we're at the end of our two thousand thirteen SAD and where do we go from there? So he gave us the, the background on all of that. It was a really big, um, packet, but a lot of that had to do with the Excel file being printed out, funny. And I think for right now, I think that was the most important. So, yeah, cool. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to our public hearing, um, the proposed budget. And we have with us this evening Rod Taylor. Um, I, I will turn to
Not long ago, we recognized a need for some immediate and professional financial assistance, given some of the staffing issues we have here. professional financial assistance, given some of the staffing issues we have here. And, and we identified two basic topics. One, the upcoming audit and, and the budget process that we were in. And, and to various degrees, we've been working on both of them. Most recently and most intense, most intensely, we've been working on the budget, which has to be in place by the end of this month. Rod Taylor from Manor Costerison is here. Manor Costerison is the company that we hired to get that immediate financial help. Rod is their representative here this evening and has been working very intensely over the last two or three weeks to help put the budget together. Rod is over at township management in, in Michigan. And before working with Manor Costerison, has worked for several years with the Michigan Office of Treasury. So he is well qualified, both in terms of local government and in terms of finance. And beyond that, he is a woodworker, as I understand it. So that's a, that's a whole nother qualification that he brings to his efforts here. Anyway, his presence has allowed the treasurer's office to focus on their year end activities. And, and there are a lot of them at this point, so we are fortunate to have him here. Rod has a presentation for us tonight. Its intention is to provide the elected officials and the citizens president with sort of the same basic foundation of information. So everyone is starting from the same place as it relates to township finances generally and our finances more specifically. It's important that everybody at least have that same basic information. So Rod, please proceed. You've got a presentation to start with and then after that, we'll open it up to.
I'll call, I'll call the hearing to order after the presentation.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate your time this evening and I appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys. As Mark said, this evening, my goal is to provide a foundation for the budget, the budget process, as well as some details on the budget, so that the board can ultimately move forward with adopting that budget here in the coming weeks. So, but before I get into specifics, talking about the budget itself, I, I wanted to kind of set the framework for the budgets overall. And one of the things that's easy to focus on is that we have this giant document here, lots of numbers. And we look at this as just a budget document. But realistically, this isn't really about a document, it's about a process. And that process is something that is kind of continuous, not only now, but previous to this time as well through the rest of the year. And so as Mark mentioned, I was brought on board to help with the preparation of the document. And as you go through that part of the process, you know, ultimately there has to be a detailed review, which is the purpose for the public hearing that we're having. But it's also reviewed, not only looking at from the short term, which is what you're trying to improve for next year, but also a recognition for the long term. Because the decisions that you make today not only affect the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, but ultimately will affect in future years as well. So for example, if you add, the example I always like to give is if you add a splash pad, well, that's great, but you actually have to pay for it and maintain that as well. So decisions today impact decisions for the future as well. So certainly not short term, long term. Then we go through the budget adoption and a lot of people think, well, that's where it ends. But realistically, that just is kind of the beginning because now that goes into two thousand and twenty-four with the implementation of the things that are identified. And one of the most important things is the ongoing monitoring. And that's why it's important to look at this entire process, not just something that you do once a year, you put it away and you're done with it, but as a, a long term process. When you think about a budget, it does a number of things. One is there's a few legal things that it does. And that sets the millage rates that you're going to assess the residents on their winter tax bill. Establishes your legal spending limits. You're not able to spend any money without first adopting a budget. And then sets the baseline for that fiscal monitoring that we just talked about in the upcoming years. But a budget is much more than that. It's really the implementation of the board's larger strategic plans and initiatives. And so it takes together, you know, earlier this evening, we heard about your master plan. You know, I'm sure you have a parks and recs plan, you have capital improvements plan. The budget is the tool that you implement all of those other documents that you work on as an organization. And it ultimately kind of sets the goals and expectations. It's also a communications tool, not only because of the public hearing, but it's also establishes that transparency with your public about what you're doing with the dollars that are being assessed for them via their village. And so for example, one of the things that we added to the budget this year that was in your packet is a budget narrative. And the idea being is providing more information so there's better understanding of what the board is doing and trusting those public dollars. Establishes priorities for staff. You know, ultimately, your staff are the ones that implement your initiatives. And the budget is a tool that helps establish what your expectations are. And then it's also a valuable term tool, especially when you have new employees, new board members that come on board, because it is really the driver for everything you do. And in my personal opinion, because as Mark said, my background is in financial management, is that it's one of the most important things that a board actually does. So I think it's really important to recognize of all the other things that you do, this is the one thing statutorily that you have to do. And again, it's the driver for all the activities that you have. One of the, the last thing I want to mention that a budget does is it also helps you prepare for the future, specifically related to unexpected unplanned events. And so not only we're trying to figure out what you're going to spend next year, but it's also how much money that you have set aside so that if all of a sudden you have a large expenditure you anticipate or if the state, for example, reduces revenue sharing as they've done in the past, that you have enough funds available that you don't have to immediately adjust a critical service delivery. So it's, it's also a tool for financial stability. In terms of the budget process that we did here, it started with Sandy, who is a long-term employee for nominal knowledge of the community and the organization, worked with department heads to put together a budget worksheet. So she provided a great baseline. That's kind of after that is where I came in. And my focus was really looking at two thousand and twenty-three and reviewing the current expenditures, looking at past trends and coming up with estimates for the two thousand and twenty-three budget. And that's important because again, two thousand and twenty-three is kind of sets the baseline for what you have available to spend in two thousand and twenty-four. So we want a good number associated with that, as well as an upcoming meeting, you're going to have to do some budget adjustments. Then we focused on the two thousand and twenty-four development of the budget. And again, that looked at what was being requested by the department heads, as well as looking at past trends that occurred. One of the things that we added to the budget this year was a tie in with the authorized position sheet. And we tied that in with the associated wages and fringes. That's the largest portion of your budget is wages and fringes. And so we want to make sure that we have good data that's driving that ultimate budget. So we have a whole other spreadsheet that kind of drives that. I then came down, did a meeting with most of the department heads, not everybody, but most of the department heads, to gain a better understanding of what they were looking for, understanding the process, and then we refined that. So that's one reason why you may see we've had a number of versions. One thing that's important to recognize, when I talked previously, this is a process. Now, this process normally takes, you know, for, for a small looking or government, maybe three months. For a large government, six to nine months. And we really had a condensed schedule here. I've only been on board for about three weeks. And so we really had to move quickly, but I think ultimately we do have a good project. So then we have the public hearing, which we're talking about tonight. There is a budget workshop session that is tentatively scheduled for next week to allow the board to have some more discussion. And we'll continue our refinement, ultimately leading to that, that adoption. And then again, monitoring, because this is not a process that ends this month. So overview, so overall, the township has twenty-two different funds. And of those twenty-two funds, you have about twenty-four million dollars in expenditures. And those, but those different funds are broken up into different categories based upon the state chart of accounts. That primary fund that we talk about most is the general fund. And that's the driver for most of the activities within the township and for most organizations. And it helps support those other funds. You also have an enterprise fund. You actually have two funds, the water fund and sewer fund in those. And those are considered business funds as more often referred to. And that means that basically they're self-supporting. And so in other words, the rates that are charged for those, for water and sewer are intended to wholly pay for the expenses in that fund. Then you have special revenue funds and special revenue funds are specifically designated as funds where there is a specific set of revenues that are intended to pay for a defined set of expenditures. And so you can't use that money and it's been talked about a little bit outside of that scope. So, and then we have capital project funds and those are again, just a funds that drive capital projects within the township, in this case, road developments. So as I mentioned, overall, between those twenty-two funds, your total expenditures are about twenty-four million dollars, which is a very healthy budget. And that, while the township is kind of a smaller component of that, and again, it is kind of one of the primary funds because it has the most diversity in terms of our expenditure basis. So we'll talk quite a bit about the general fund this evening, but we'll talk about the other funds as well. So general fund, so first of all, revenues. And again, I apologize, I talked very quickly, so I need to slow down, but I, I need time to support myself. So general fund, in terms of how those revenues are broke down, the two largest components of your revenues are revenues from taxes, your millage rate that you have, as well as state and federal grants. And I'll talk a little bit more about those specifically in the next slide. So the property taxes is derived from two components. One is your millage rate and the other is your taxable value. And so it's important to keep, when you talk about the revenue that's generated from property taxes, it's important to recognize there's two components of that that drive that equation. And for the last five years, the township's growth in their property tax collection is average about five percent a year. And that's higher than the C P I that's used to determine proposal A. So proposal A limits your growth in terms of your taxable value, by not more than that amount. And that is average about two percent for the last five years. And so you guys have more than doubled your growth based upon that capping limit. Now, I've finished that thought and the primary reason for that is associated with new development and then selling of properties which uncaps values. So that's why you, you've seen more growth than what that other, other averages. And Jessica, I'll stop there and finish.
What happened between twenty fourteen and twenty thirteen?
So I talked to the assessor about that and she believes it's associated with Dexter, the village.
The annexation, yeah.
Yeah, and then so that pulled off that value. Great question. And that's the way that that popped up. Now, for the budget purposes, I have used a growth of six percent, which again is higher than what your average is bet. And the reason I'm using six percent is because the C I P limit for proposal A has hit the maximum of five percent. And as Mark said, I was in treasury and it's expected that's probably going to hit there for two years in a row at least because of how that equation works. So you will see a little bit higher growth than you've probably seen in the past for property taxes. Revenue share, again, that's your other large source of revenues that you receive. And revenue sharing is actually made up of two components. The first component and the largest component is constitutional revenue sharing. And that makes up ninety-six percent of your revenue sharing. So it makes up the vast majority of the revenue sharing that you get. And constitutional revenue sharing is derived from sales tax. So as sales tax fluctuates in state of Michigan, so does the constitutional revenue sharing that local government receives. But the good news is that state sales tax collection, all the way through the pandemic, have been extremely strong. And every year, the state has a revenue consensus conference and they analyze the future economy and they believe that, that that should be strong at least for the next year as well. One thing that you'll notice on this graph is, for example, in two thousand and twenty-two, you see a jump up in revenue sharing. You also see that back in two thousand and twelve as well. And that's impacted because it's not only your revenue sharing for constitutional, it's not only based on your sales tax, it's also based on your population. So because of the census, every decade, because you guys have been growing, you see a jump up associated with that. So for example, in two thousand and twenty-two, you actually received payments for two thousand and twenty, twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two. So that year was higher than it is for, for normal, normal years. Because the census numbers didn't completely come out until two thousand and twenty-two. So the other component of revenue sharing is statutory revenue sharing. And specifically, it's called city villages township revenue share. And it's had different names over the years. That's the current iteration of that. This number is determined by an appropriation by the state legislature, completely up to them, what they, what they do every year. The good news is that they, for this upcoming year, the governor's recommended budget has some pretty significant increases associated with that. Additionally, they've added some additional revenue sharing related to public safety, specifically police. But because that's such a small portion of your revenue sharing, it doesn't really have a big impact to you. So for example, on the public safety component, that's going to be about another two thousand dollars that you guys will get to them and you have to use for that. So not a, not a big impact. So that's revenue share. Expenses, so your expenses again are primarily made up into two overall areas. One is public safety. We had the sheriff's department here speaking earlier this evening. And those expenses for that contract come out of the general fund and come out of the public safety category. Fire, you'll note, is not included in that. And that's because we have a different fund here that those revenues that, because it's a separate taxation and then it goes into a special revenue fund associated with that. So the public safety here is just the sheriff's department's cost. And the other one is government operations. So that includes your, all of the other operations. So that is supervisor, administrator, accounting, clerk, elections, technology, treasurer, assessor. Basically, all of the, the, the departments that are charged with some type of governmental operational function, if you will. So that is the second largest expenditure that we have. So from this part of the presentation, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the large changes that you might see in some of the budgets. One of the biggest changes that's impacting your budget going into two thousand and twenty-four is positional changes. So I have a number of slides that are in discussion or representation of the additional cost that would be added to the budget through these additional positions or changes, those, those positions. So the first one is the, the administrator position. That is being budgeted for nine months, taking into account that it's going to take time to fill that position. And with the salaries and, and fringes, we're estimating about a hundred and forty thousand dollars to do that, as well as we still have some costs in the budget associated with consulting, because we still have Mark's time for that remaining, at least those remaining months, as well as maybe a little longer to bring that new person on board. Within the accounting department, there's a request to fill the vacancy for the finance director. And that would be about a hundred and fifteen thousand, as well as add a new finance assistant for sixty-three thousand dollars. And then we have clerks and elections, we have the deputy clerk that's currently working twenty-four hours. It's being requested that would be increased to additional, to thirty-two hours. So that would be an additional thirteen thousand dollars associated with those positions. One of the conversations that was had early on was Sandy, the deputy treasurer is going to be retiring. Congratulations. And whether or not it would be valuable to bring somebody in to cross train that position. For right now, that position has not been included in the budget as proposed. Then there's the new technology position. Currently, the township contracts with an outside consultant. And that would, is, the discussion has been to bring that in-house. That would have another about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. There's still some money associated with contracted services as you transition from an external service provider to an internal service provider. So those costs could actually be a little less depending on the service that was needed. One area the township has had a vacancy in for a while is associated with the assessing department. It's my understanding, previously, there were more positions in there. The assessors requesting fill that position with an associate assessor, not only to help with the workload associated with that, but also for succession planning as well. She eventually will retire. Human resources, there's built in for a part-time H R journalist that currently is again mostly handed, handled through outside consulting services, so that we bring that in-house. And then we're almost done, then we're in fire. There is a request to move the current part-time administrative assistant. There is a request to move the current part-time administrative assistant position to a full-time position, which would add about another fifty-six thousand dollars in total wages and benefits, as well as there was requests to add three additional full-time firefighters. That would allow the fire department to not have to utilize the current part-time paid-on-call staff and then be able to fully staff the three shifts with four officers to categorically provide fire service. Has not been included in the budget and when we get to the fire department budget, you'll be able to see why. And then the last one is, I think this is the last one, yeah, is related to parks and pathways. There's a request to convert the current authorized but vacant project manager position to a part-time position, as well as bring on two park stewards, as well as two natural feature interns. Those two, those four positions would work by their part-time, they would work over the summer. So they would work full-time for three months over the summer. I actually was looking at the numbers yesterday and I think I may have budgeted a little high here. So it's probably a little less than twenty-four thousand dollars for each of these, for these, these positions. But probably not a lot less. All right, so now we'll talk kind of about the impacts of what the proposed budget looks like. So this sheet here provides an overview and you'll see a lot of these for the different funds. But it provides a summary of the total revenues and total expenditures, both from a historical perspective, so in twenty-one, twenty-two, as well as what our current projections are for twenty-three, and then ultimately the recommended budget for twenty twenty-four. And one thing you'll notice here is that for three of the four years, we showed deficit spending. Now deficit spending, one of the questions that's asked quite a bit is that, well, can you do that? Local governments can't have deficits. Well, there's a difference between having a deficit and deficit spending. So deficit spending is allowed. It is allowable under state law. Basically, you're using money from your available fund balance and that, and it's perfectly fine. But a deficit is actually when you have no longer have any fund balance and your expenditures exceed your revenues. And that's not the case in this particular fund. So one note, and I'll talk a little bit more about this on the next slide, is twenty-three. You'll notice a large difference there. And that's associated with two primary items. And one I know is still be decided, and that is associated with the closing of the pension program. And the, to ultimately that would have a one year.
Retiring healthcare. I'm just clarifying for any employees listening.
Yeah, yes, yeah. So that's the retiring healthcare. So from the state's perspective, it's referred to as other post-employment benefits. So that's all. So thank you for that clarification. And the other is a transfer of about one point five million dollars to the fire department to basically eliminate the loan that was previously given associated with that. Again, I'll talk a little bit more about that on the fire department. But this is a kind of a trend line of what your revenues and expenditures have been since twenty-ten. One thing that you'll notice here is that I, for a trend purposes, I've excluded this one-time set of transfers for the fire department. So this bubble way up here is the actual expected expenditure expenditures for twenty twenty-three. But again, because that's kind of an outlier, I wanted to kind of show what the trends would look like associated with the, a budget over time. So the, the ultimate impact of the, let me go back to that slide is, and let me clarify a little bit so you see the numbers. So the blue line is your expenditures and then the orange line is your revenues. And so the ultimate impact of having revenues that exceed expenditures or the inverse is the impact of your fund balance. So your fund balance is a ratio that's important for the monitoring of your overall fiscal. And I mentioned a little bit earlier that, you know, part of the budget process is planning for unplanned, unexpected events. And the way that you do that is by carrying an appropriate level of fund balance. Now, the question of what is an appropriate level of fund balance is really dependent on any individual local unit of government. And ultimately, and I believe that you guys have a fund balance policy, normally your fund balance policy is gonna be the driver of what's appropriate for you for a local unit of government. But from a, from a, from a, just a raw numbers perspective to set this in perspective, the, in twenty twenty-one, the township's unrestricted fund balance was a hundred and sixty-five percent. So what does that mean compared to other local units of government? So if you compare it to other townships, the median is a hundred and fifty-nine percent. So you guys are a little bit above the median for other townships across state. But in reality, that's not a good comparison. And the reason it's not a good comparison is because you guys, your population is of other townships, you're in the ninety-nine percent of other townships. And from a budget, you're the ninety-nine percent of other townships. So really comparing you to other, other township is probably not the best option. So I compared it charter towns.
Can you clarify, we're in the ninety-nine percent of what?
So you're compared, so most townships in the state of Michigan have a population of less than two thousand. You guys' population is twenty thousand. And so you are nine, you're ninety-nine percent are smaller than you. Or you're in the largest one percent. That's better ways. You're in the largest one percent of townships across the state. So you're much bigger than, than most all other townships are.
As well as for our revenue and fund balance?
Yes, yes, as well. Yes. Thank you for it. So I compared you to charter townships. And charter townships tend to provide more services, like you guys do. And charter townships tend to have larger populations as well. And so again, you're, the median for charter townships is a hundred and twelve percent compared to your a hundred and sixty-five percent. Now, one of the things that I, you know, I don't know this, but based upon the large expenditures that you have in twenty twenty-three, I would guess that you guys are probably gonna be slightly below the median for other charter townships in the state at the end of twenty twenty-four. Not a hundred percent sure of that. That's just a guess. But the point is, you're still in that, that median of other, other charter townships around the state. So one of the things that I, I did is I took that previous graph that we showed of revenues and expenditures. And this is a trend line. So the solid line through the middle basically is showing the orange line again is your revenue. So historically, your revenues have exceeded your expenditures. But what you see here is a trend is that your revenues are growing slower than your expenditures have been. So that's just important to think about as you plan, not only in this budget, but future budgets, is you be able to obviously sustain that. You know, the closer that gets together, the more likely you're gonna use fund balance. And then more likely than you may not have enough fund balance to plan for those unplanned, unexpected events. All right, so now we're gonna switch to some of the other funds. So that's an overview. So the fire fund, I already mentioned that there's a request for a new position in there. Not a new position, the conversion of the part-time to full-time administrative assistant. One of the things that's not in the budget is, and that was requested, was putting money into an equipment vehicle replacement fund. I consider that a best practice because fire equipment is expensive. And so it's valuable to set money aside to ensure that you have those funds when it's time to replace that equipment. But we've not included them in that budget. Explain by a second. We do have a vehicle exhaust system for one of the small outbuildings the fire department has. So again, this is the same graph we saw before. That kind of shows that history. And so in, for example, in twenty-one, twenty-two, you see that, I can't actually bring my mouse up over there, but you see the negative one point four million dollars leaving you with a deficit. And we talked about before, deficit spending, deficit budgets are not allowed under state law. And so to correct that, the township at their last meeting, right? The last meeting approved a one point five million dollar transfer. So that puts this budget back in twenty-three into the red. And then for twenty twenty-four, we still have a small deficit associated with that. And that's why we didn't include the request for the additional full-time firefighters, as well as the money into the equipment vehicle reserve, because that would make the deficit even larger. So that's why you see the recommended budget the way it is. And parks and pathways, I'm not gonna go through each of the projects. This was in your budget narrative. But again, we had the request for the new positions we've already talked about, as well as the revenues associated with free grants. Some of that money comes in over multiple years, not all in one year, as well as a number of expenditures for improvements to a number of the pathways and parks facilities associated with that. Again, the overall impact of this is this fund, you know, has seen a growing fund balance over the last four years. And then the twenty-four shows a small decrease in that fund. This fund I do view as a little bit different to some of the other funds in the sense that, you know, it is a, obviously a separate millage that is brought in specifically to pay for parks and pathway improvements. And so the, the philosophy of your fund balance would be different than it would be for an other fund like a general fund. So using down this fund balance is not necessarily a bad thing, as long as you have enough money to be able to pay for those, that maintenance of those assets after they've been developed. So you also have a separate millage, as you know, for bus transportation. You know, really, this is kind of, you know, in essence, a pass-through because you collect the money and then you pay for that service going out. The open space land preservation, I did have an opportunity to come down and speak at the committee meeting last week, where Will spoke earlier about. Again, this fund is again, is a little bit different than a normal fund in terms of what its purpose is intended to be. And so we do show deficit spending in this fund, but to a certain extent, which specifically in twenty-four, much of that's kind of a placeholder because much of this is determined by opportunity. So as the opportunity presents itself, then you may expend some of that money. But if those opportunities don't present themselves, you may not spend as much associated with this particular, this fund. Roads. And so you guys have, this is really, slide should have been in our general fund category, but I want to include all the roads together because you're funded in a number of different ways. So I did have an opportunity to talk to trustee about those projects and this is what we have. So in the general fund, we have a hundred and five thousand dollars worth of projects. But one of the things that the county does is the county receives funds from the state of Michigan called Act fifty-one dollars. Those Act fifty-one dollars are determined by the number of road miles that you have in the township. It's an equation. And they basically pass those dollars back through to the township because they ultimately own and are responsible for the roads. They get the revenue from the state associated with the roads and then they pass a portion of that revenue back to the township. And so we're offsetting that ninety-nine thousand dollars, or that, we're offsetting the hundred and five thousand dollars with that contribution the road commission have. So the total impact on the general fund would only be five thousand dollars. So the other way that you guys fund roads in the township, and there was a little bit of discussion earlier this evening, is one with the four oh four fund. And that fund is your special, your township-wide special assessment district. And so I, all right, I don't know these specific roads I'm not gonna talk about up here. But these are the projects that have identified as part of the road committee for, and working with the road commission for improvement in twenty twenty-four. And the other one you have is a road improvement revolving fund. And here are the projects associated with those. Now, overall, I don't have a summary sheet that shows the, like I did for the other funds, for each of the road funds. And that's because you have eleven sad funds. And so I didn't really, it doesn't do any good to summarize that information, but they are obviously in the budget pack. The last two funds that you have are your enterprise funds, your business funds. And one of the things that I did this year, well, first of all, in terms of expenses in the sewer fund, you have a backup generator for a pump station on which, what road is that? Jackson Road? Yeah. And so it's my understanding that is a primary pump station. If that were to fail, that would be a significant negative impact to residents because it potentially could be backups within their basement. So having the appropriate backup generator will alleviate that risk. So that's included in the budget. One of the things though that I did this year is you'll see two sections. You have the top section, which is what you've historically seen, which is your ending net position. So for example, if you look at the end of twenty-four, you see an ending net position of twenty-eight million dollars. And you look at that saying, well, great, we've got lots of money associated with the sewer fund. But the net position is different than the fund balance that we talked about previously. And that is because the enterprise funds use a different methodology than accounting, called full accrual accounting versus modified accrual accounting. And it takes into account the value of the assets, in this case, the pipes in the ground. And so because this is a business, if you were to sell this tomorrow, you would go out to the market and ask for twenty-eight million dollars to be able to buy your sewer system. Well, you're probably not gonna sell your sewer system. There probably are not gonna be any buyers in there. So that really doesn't have, even though from an accounting perspective, you account for it, it really doesn't have true value. And so what I tried to do is, is do what I call a fund balance equivalent. So I took out two big numbers, and that is the depreciation that you see associated with the enterprise funds. So when you look at your net revenues minus your expenditures, we don't include this depreciation number, which in, in my mind is a, is an accounting number that is represented of what you should be kind of setting aside for future expenditures. But again, it confuses things. And the other thing that I did is that instead of using that position, I've done this fund balance equivalent, which is your current assets, which is basically the cash that you have, minus your current liabilities, the amount of money that you owe. And so that gives you a better, I guess, layman's term, understanding of the financial, financial position of these two funds. And so that case, again, this is not, this is not, this is relative. This is not exact. But it does give you a better understanding. Your ending fund balance would be about fourteen million dollars associated with sewer fund. And then when we look at the water fund, it's about six million dollars. So those are the, those two funds. So the last two slides that I have is, I wanted to talk briefly about one of the changes that is still being discussed by the township board. It is built in the budget for about twenty-three and twenty-four, and that's the cost allocation plan. And the gentleman from the Parks Committee, Will, had talked about this earlier on, and that the idea between a cost allocation plan is that, as I mentioned before, your general fund is your primary fund. And your general fund provides services to all your other funds. So we have treasurer who invests money, you know, that there's a cost associated with that. There's a cost associated with printing, paying bills. There's a cost associated with technology. There's a cost associated with the auditing. You have to have an audit every year. So there's a whole series of different costs. And so the idea between a cost allocation plan is to ensure that those funds are paying their share of those costs. Now, the challenge with a cost allocation plan is that it's not an exact science. There's no easy way to determine within a small error percentage. And so what most local units of government do, there's basically two approaches. One is to use just a flat percent, a, a, a number that's generated. And the other one is to use some type of methodology or, or metrics to determine what those different funds would be charged based upon those. So for example, in this case, we have, we look at the last line, item information technology. For those funds that are charged that, they look at the number of computers that has. So for example, we have the parks fund, that's a separate fund. We have fire fund, that's a separate fund. And they have computers that are associated with those employees. And that helps represent the cost to provide technology services to those funds. So that would allow a proportional share to be shared with those. One of the things I thought would be interesting to show is, what is the net impact of those funds as a percentage of expenditures? And so this is for twenty twenty-four. You know, it ranges anywhere from one percent for the smaller funds. The fire fund has the biggest impact, which is nine percent. But also keep in mind that this number would be a variable number because it's based upon the actual expenditure. So for example, when we talk about the finance director, if you didn't fill that position until much later in the year, these numbers would go down potentially. And so they would, would be more associated with the actual expenditure. These are based on the, on the current estimates. But, you know, from an outside perspective, I looked at this and said, you know, does this seem, appear to be fair and reasonable? And when you look at, for example, federal or state grants, you know, many of those allow indirect costs associated anywhere. associated anywhere between five and fifteen percent. It's kind of considered within industrial standards of ten, fifteen percent. Anything less than that would be probably representative associated with those. So.
The LPC considered open space here?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so three percent of total expenditures is actually pretty consistent or maybe a little low compared to the others.
If you, that's, yeah. But, I mean, as was pointed out, you know, they're not being charged, some of the other funds, for example, being charged technology. They're not being charged building and grounds. So they do, because they don't utilize those services and that's probably one reason why it reflects a different number there.
If I'm going back one slide, I just want to make a very brief comment that might help the board. That last column says proportionate across funds. It's not across all funds for each of those. So the top two, finance director and finance manager, those are apportioned across all funds. Deputy treasurer and staff are apportioned just across the funds that don't get the one percent admin fee. So that's water, sewer, and the SAD funds. Audit is apportioned across all funds. Buildings and grounds is apportioned by percent of township hall square footage used by general parks, water, and sewer. And IT is by computer, general parks, fire, water, sewer. So open space is being apportioned, just the finance staff and audit insofar as there's the actual indirect costs. And this is similar to, it's an improvement upon what we did in twenty-one, twenty-two. We paid Woodhill to develop this. And it was, the board stepped away from using it last year and then it's back with revisions.
Well, I'd like to finish the presentation.
That's, that's it, yeah.
Okay, quick question, and then I want to turn to the public because this is the public hearing.
Brad, in, so some of these that are based on millage, you know, we have like, you know, the open space and parks and pathways. Does that have to be in the ballot language in order to cost allocate? Is any, no? Okay.
No.
I, I mean, I think it has to be directly related.
And so that's part of the advantage of actually using a formula. When you actually say, okay, how many transactions were related to the open space fund? You take that as a proportion. I think it's very justifiable that it's a directly related cost because that cost wouldn't have existed if not for the fund.
Thank you. Catch that you were actually.
No, no, sorry, I shouldn't have had any slide, but I did.
Well, in that case, I'd like to turn to the public hearing. So we've opened the public hearing at nine fourteen. And if members of the public who are present who would like to speak in response to or in, and add any comments you have, proposals for the budget. This is the time for that. And then once we've gone through all of the people who are present in the room, then we'll turn to those who are participating remotely. So if you would like to speak, please come forward. And during public hearings, each speaker is allotted five minutes. You don't have to use five minutes, but you have five minutes.
Yes, I'm the, the public that's here. Hi, good evening, thank you. My name is Jim Carson and I am here representing the Dexter Senior Center. I live in the city of Dexter. If you need my address, it's four oh two Cambridge Drive. I, I, I want to start by, first of all, thanking you for your support for the last two years. We, as you know, we, like so many centers like our own, we, we closed for COVID. And the, the funding that you provided definitely helped us reopen the center. It helped us get the center reopened and to build our center back. We are, as of last Friday, we reached a, a membership number of three hundred and sixty-five, which in two thousand and nineteen, just before COVID, we were at three hundred and sixty-four. And our membership actually was, it started off slow, but after the first of the year, it really has progressed. And again, we, we needed the support to keep us, to keep us going. I wanted to, I, I know that you're in the process or your budget process. I understand how that works and I know that you have a work session coming up. And I wanted to, first of all, say that I, we provided the township on February fifteenth through an email to Supervisor Pathway a funding request. I don't know if you've had the opportunity to read our funding request. I know that you're going into a workshop. I wanted to be here tonight just to see if there's anything that we could do to help you when you start putting the figures into your budget in our category. So, you know, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to read this yet.
We just got it.
Okay, it was sent to the township on February fifteenth.
Yeah, I think there was a misunderstanding. I didn't realize that you were intending for that to go out to the board. I shared it with the township manager.
Yes.
Me, I think you had a meeting with, am I correct that you guys met?
It's not till tomorrow.
Oh, it's not till tomorrow.
How are you, Mark? How are you? Mark and I had a wonderful conversation, Will, about two weeks ago. And he is coming to our center tomorrow. And, but with the public hearing being tonight, we wanted to make sure that we were here tonight. It's, this funding proposal is too important to us to, to not be here. It is a, it is an increase. I don't know if, again, some of you have not been able to, to look at it yet. It is an increase. I will tell you that, if you haven't seen it, it's an increase from seven thousand a year to twenty-two thousand dollars for this year. Our letter specifically, we wrote it like a grant to you, so letting you know exactly what we do, what services we're performing and what the justification of the additional fifteen thousand dollars for the year would. But what is, what it's based on. And again, I, we're, we're, we want to provide you with the proper information. We don't know what that is yet. And we have a week to do that, hopefully. Tomorrow, some things will probably get cleared up with Mark. Yes.
Sure. Yeah, so, so generally speaking, what are your other primary funding sources?
Grants, donations. The Dexter Senior Center is a, it, it is a nonprofit corporation. We are, we've been in business for fifty-three years. We are a self-sustaining, self-funding senior center. We are the only self-sustaining, funding senior center in Washtenaw County, Southern Livingston County. And I don't know how far out into the other counties, but we are, we are self-sustaining. And what that means is, is on January first of each year, even though we do have some community partners that we can, we can, you know, rely on, we start all over again. We start at zero on January first, and we've been doing that for fifty-three years. So where do we get our funding? We get our funding through membership. We get our membership fees. We get our funding through donations. Municipal contributions, like, like what, what SiO Township did the last two years. Grants, we're constantly writing grants. Our, our ability to get large sums of money is, you know, it, it, we have to write a lot of grants. A lot of grants. Most grants do not fund personnel. It funds our programs, it funds, you know, some of our equipment needs, our computer needs, our technology needs, things like that.
And Mark mentioned at a management meeting that the Dexter Senior Center provides meals for seniors. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, I can. And I specifically want to talk about, thank you for asking. I want to specifically talk about what we do for SiO Township. We are, the Dexter Senior Center is, we do provide meals on wheels. We're part of the large county, actually national program. Our primary area, or actually our described area with AAA one B is the Dexter School District. Several years ago, there was a void in SiO Farms. You, you know, I, I would, I guess I'll say that that's probably where the majority of your homebound residents are for SiO, in the SiO Township area. And the county came to us and asked us if we would take that on. And we did. And even though it was in, it was not, you know, in the Dexter School District, we did take that on. We were happy to do that. It, it just helped us to accomplish our mission more than, than, than what we were doing. And it's actually, from the letter, if you can see from the letter that we sent you, it represents forty-four percent of the program that we're operating out of Dexter. It, we, you don't make money off of this. This is not something that you make money off. It's, it's funded by, our funding comes from the federal government. They provide the food, they pay for all the food, and they give us one dollar for each delivery that we make. We probably, we generated forty-four hundred dollars last year to, to, to deliver food into SiO. Or I mean, into SiO Farms. You know, we can go into a lot of detail on that. If you want to hear more about it, it, it is listed again in the letter that we provided and the grant that we raised. We gave more statistics than that.
That's helpful. Thank you. It's, it's good to know about the participation in the meal delivery.
So nineteen percent of your membership is SiO residents and you provide eighty-five meals a week for SiO residents. That's correct. And now that's two different numbers now, okay? What that means is, just, just because I did have a question on that before. As far as the general center is concerned, you know, just the date, you know, this general membership. Okay, yes, we do, we have, at the time that this letter was written, there were sixty members from SiO Township. We have sixty of our members. That was numbers are not, your, your homebound residents that we're providing meals to wheels for are not included in that.
People that can come and do your activities to the receivable to who you deliver.
Yes, sir, I get it. Yes.
Just lots of activities, fitness, nutrition, education classes, art, language, music, meditation, health, caregiving.
Yes. I'll say one other thing if I can, and then I know, I'm sure my time is up, you haven't clocked me yet. Okay, so, and, and we can talk more about this. And Mark and I did talk about this and we'll probably be talking more about it tomorrow. The, the approach, we're asking you to help us, basically, we're asking you to help us fund the Meals on Wheels program at, at SiO Farms. All right, with the history, we, we've never covered our expenses there. That is come out of our general fund, the deficit comes out of our, our general fund. Each year we've covered that. We are projecting a twenty percent increase in deliveries in SiO Farms in this, this coming year and into twenty-four. And we're projecting a twenty-two thousand dollar deficit this year. So the basis of the ask for SiO Township this year is to help us make that program whole. We can figure this any other way, we can talk about other areas, but you know, that's, that's the gist. That's where the twenty-two thousand came from. I think that's important that you understand that, okay?
And, and just to clarify for everyone and, and board members who've been on the board for a while, know this already. But the relationship between the township and the Dexter Senior Center is a service agreement that we would have to formalize in order to do this. The township is not allowed to just make an outright contribution. It's, it's through an agreement for the Dexter Senior Center to provide this service, specific service to SiO residents.
Yes, the service contract has worked very well. And actually, it's a model that we're talking to the other townships about. And that they're, they're, they're interested and it has worked really well. Yes.
The other townships know that that agreement is critical for them to even give you funds. That's how we together came up with. We legally can't just give you money, but we can with an agreement and it's all cohesive.
You know, Donna, each township treasurer is told, tells us something different very. And I, you know, and I realize there's a difference between the townships maybe a little bit. But actually, the city of Dexter and the other Dexter Township and Webster Township, we just send them an invoice.
And you're dealing with treaties. I understand.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, things are different. I, we understand that. And you know what? Things are changing and they're going to change really drastically here in the next year, so. Big decisions to make. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Don't hesitate to let us know if we can help you with any other information, okay? See you tomorrow.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present here in the hall who would like to speak during the public hearing on the budget?
Kathleen Brandt, still a SiO taxpayer. Okay, I, I'd like to thank Mr. Taylor for your efforts in the budget this year. This process is exactly what David Rowley had advised us to do. Strenuously advised us to do. And by the way, this is night and day from the budget process, budget process presented by Ms. Engler last year. Night and day. Okay, I want to talk first about the general fund. I see that interest earnings are projected, projected at sixty thousand dollars. That seems very low and unreasonable. But further, I looked at the last investment report presented by the treasurer. And it shows that we still have four point six million dollars with credit suites. Is that correct?
They're all out, they're all gone.
That's not what you report from December shows.
No, that's true. But that's when credit suites, all of a sudden, we were hearing them. And I reported last meeting that they were all gone.
Okay, then I have a problem that none of that information was in the packet. All I have access to is what's on the website. And it shows maturity dates of May.
Because that is the last quarter report that I was required. There'll be another one coming out for basically the end of March.
Okay, but I still take exception. If you have financial reports you're giving to the board, you need to make those available to the public. That's a requirement. Okay, so.
I don't think that's what she's saying. We, we have.
She said at the last meeting, she presented financial documents. Those were not.
I have a statement. That credit suite was all gone.
Okay, if it's all gone, I'm elated because that was a lot of money to have on the line. Credit Suisse had a run on their bank of Q four of a hundred and twenty billion dollars. Thank you to Ryan Yable, Yable for pointing that out. I think he saved SiO's financial butt on that. I want to talk about cost allocation. I understand those models completely and very familiar with using those in corporate life, they call it overhead. I, I just want to point out that the cost allocation for this year is extremely high. And there's one very good reason. When this board failed to hire a finance director, then what is in cost allocation is the consulting fees to do that work. So this is on the board for not hiring previously and continuing to not hire. So when Mr. Weber is upset about his cost allocation and has no concerns for anything else in the township, his fund had a finding in the audit. So there's more that went into the efforts for his. His fund had a finding in the audit, so there's more that went into the efforts for his fund. And it's not his funding, by the way, his taxpayer funds. And to give him a break would be that you're taking money out of the general fund to compensate. Which as taxpayers, we've already paid that for LBC. I don't want to pay more than what we have already voted. Okay, supervisor activity, general fund, activity one seventy-one. It shows full-time salary of sixty-eight thousand dollars. I believe that is half of Ms. Egler's salary. Requested is sixty-eight thousand, recommended is fifty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty. Well, the request should have come from the supervisor, correct?
Either a supervisor or C O.
It's supervisor activity one seventy-one, it's the general fund, but it's activity one seventy-one.
Yeah, this would be, well, page four. Activity one seventy-one, seventy-one.
Well, I'll tie it in with the treasure fund, activity two fifty-three.
I think that's correct. Two five over, by side, full-time salary.
Okay. Okay, so the other half is associated with treasury, is that correct? Okay, so treasury account two fifty-three, it says there's a request for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That looks like the recommended is fifty-five thousand, if I could venture a guess. Rod, is that the difference between what was requested and what's being recommended in that extra position?
Yes, the requested column reflects what, was, Armin had a request. And then, as I mentioned before, through the analysis conversations, et cetera.
So was that going to be a, a second person?
Yes, that, one of the things that we, I mentioned in the presentation was, there's a conversation about bringing somebody in. Part-time before that we left, and so that much of that cost was associated with that additional.
Do we have a timeframe for the deputy treasurer leaving?
No, I thought you had crossed it out.
It is crossed out, yes, the recommended is, is higher. The recommended is lower than the requested, because it's been crossed out.
Okay, good. Do we have a timeframe for the retirement?
I don't know that it's been officially announced.
In the sheriff fund, it comes on the general fund account, activity three zero one. This versus last year, last year's night and day, because none of my questions got answered. Nobody wanted to answer any of my questions, so I really appreciate this collaborative effort. So, Sheriff, who put in the, who from the board put in the request for two million dollars?
Where did that come from, Rod or Mark? Did you know?
I, no, I, I do not know.
Well, someone had to request it.
The original budget package.
The original budget package that, that I received, I think that was the part because it wasn't known at the time, exactly what that contracted amount was, so.
Well, we do know what that contracted amount is.
Yeah.
I think Ryan Yable gave that feedback.
So the number that I have represented in the recommended budget is based upon, because your budget year and the contract year are different. I basically created a separate spreadsheet that, you know, reflected the costs associated. Between the calendar year and the fiscal year, and then also there's an additional, I think it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. On top of the contract to reflect the cost of overtime. So that really is the only number that's variable is the overtime amount.
And, and I wonder, Rod, this is kind of more of a budget policy determination, but the refunds and rebates. We don't really get that three hundred thousand, and so, should it be, it's sort of a. I mean, Lieutenant Hunt isn't here, I would say it if he were, but it's sort of a manufactured discount. That they're suddenly showing us that they say has always been there, so should it really be reported as revenue? We never see that money, it's not really part of our cost.
So the way it was explained to me originally was that it wasn't sure how it was going to be reflected. And so I just carried through what was in the recommended, but I would agree with you that most likely, that's not how it's going to be billed. And from a budgeting perspective, you're probably better off budgeting the actual expenditure, because it's not a revenue, so you're not, you're not.
We're not actually going to see that money.
That would be the easy adjustment if we were.
So I, I want to go back to my first question.
Sorry, Kathleen.
My first question, who is, who is providing these numbers, for example, the three hundred and eleven thousand? And the two million, somebody from SIO Township is providing these numbers.
It originated with Will and Sandy and Jim Murty.
Okay.
Last year. Earlier.
Well, we started out in December or November with this process, gathering the information.
I don't need to know the timeline of the process. I, I want to know who gave the number.
That's when Jim Murty was involved, and now we have a different interim township manager. And so, there's a lot of different people who have been involved in this particular process. And now we have Rod Taylor, so I mean, there's.
Mr. Taylor did not provide the numbers, okay, requesting.
Asking about who.
I don't believe Mr. Thompson provided the numbers.
Clerk was who was involved at the beginning. What do you want to know?
I want to know who provided the estimates.
Well, the numbers have been gathered over a time period by different people, so I don't know the answer to your question.
Are the different people?
We were just telling you.
Will Hathaway, Sandy Egler, and Jim Murty, is that correct?
Those are the people who were involved at the start, so if these, if that number was provided at the start, it was gathered by those.
It's not a hard question.
Kind of a hard question.
No, it's not. It's a hard question, because I have my doubts. About how these numbers were derived. I, I, I think they've been inflated on purpose.
So the contract, the one point nine, I haven't checked this, but what, how does that align with our contract number?
I don't, I can't say, but Rod, I think.
So I specifically took the contracted numbers.
Okay, great.
That, that were provided, so I, I have the, I think it's for four years if I recall correctly. And getting that list out for each year, but again, I had to take that contracted number and translate that to your fiscal year. Because once a calendar year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's one point nine.
And I would imagine it's actually one point six.
Exactly.
Right.
That's my point.
But that's, that's because that three hundred thousand isn't real.
Yeah, I know, so you look at prior years, so.
I agree with you.
I'm suspicious, it looks like somebody tried to inflate the numbers, but nobody wants to take credit for it.
Can I make a comment on this? We have always been advised, you estimate your expenses high. And your revenues low, and it will generally keep you out of trouble. Because you're always a man to make sure the final budget numbers. At the end of the fiscal year are correct. That is advice that's been given at every.
So the conference I've ever been at. So, Ms. Palmer, do they, do these advisors advise you to do a hundred and twenty-five percent of your needs?
It's based on.
Because that's what that is.
We have looked at history to try knowing cost.
Donna, were you involved with these numbers I'm talking about?
No, I was not. I'm telling you what we've been taught in seminars, et cetera.
Okay, but this is an outlier. This is an anomaly. Okay, that's fine, thanks.
Kathleen, you're at twelve. I know we've been having some back and forth.
Mr. Dexter had eleven point fifteen. I've got one, one more thing, two more things.
Every time I ask a question, John restarts the clock, so it should be okay.
I have a clock. The fire fund. Last year, the chief had requested. Three staff members, members to get him to the safety standard of two in, two out. Last year, it was taken out on the proposition that. The board loaned him some money and he was in the hole. That's been rectified. I, I would really hope that you allow the fire department to get to their safety standard. Which is four staff members on every shift. He has the money in his budget to do that. And then on the township-wide S A D fund four hundred. There should be no projected expenditures in that fund, none. There is no revenue, there is no activity, there shouldn't be no expenditures.
Proceed with the public hearing.
Actually, I would like to hear what you have said.
Well, we can have discussion after that we complete the public comment.
Hey, thirty seconds, go for it.
No, no, you are not moderating this meeting, you are, you are done. We are moving on.
This is actually helpful.
Well, I don't care what you think, we're moving on, we're moving on with the public hearing.
For Mr. Hathaway, just like the sheriff contract.
There you go again.
This is a sore point that he doesn't want to discuss.
Present who would like to speak during the public hearing on the budget?
Kathleen, I will.
Seeing none, is there anyone participating remotely who would like to speak during the public hearing?
There is Rob Catson, followed by Jonathan Greenberg. Rob, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, firefighters save lives. The fire department is the absolutely most important function that SIO Township. Provides for its residents. A few years ago, a mistake was made in how the. Renovation of the fire station was done, was made. Last year, a mistake was made in how that was accounted for. Last year, the fire guidance committee was put together to help the township figure out how to fix that problem. Part of the, the resolution of that problem was fixing the one point five million dollar mistake. That was a millstone around the neck of the fire department for years, which is an obstacle. For the fire chief to be able to do his job and safely, I emphasize safely. Dispatch his firefighters. Now, I understand that it might be a perfectly valid accounting practice that. Rob said just a few minutes ago, the fire department is now back in debt. And therefore, their request for the three new firefighters to take it to a safe, as Kathleen just said. A safe standard of two in, two out, which is for firefighters on duty to be safely dispatched. Now they can't do that, because once again, they are now in, in debt. With this new accounting method for this one point five million dollar mistake that was fixed. In my opinion, was fixed a few months ago. Now we're back in the same exact boat. My question is, what is SIO Township going to do to stop putting these obstacles in front of the fire chief? And Rob, could you please address this issue, and what can you do to help SIO Township? Fix this problem so that our fire chief can hire the people he needs. Thank you.
Can I just clarify one? Rob, you use the term deficit in two different ways, and I just wanted to clarify that two weeks ago. The board took action to relieve that liability, so that the fund is no longer negative five hundred thousand dollars. The fund balance is closer to about. Between six and seven hundred thousand dollars. I believe what Rod was saying is, the projected budget is still. Negative eighty-six thousand expenditures over revenue, so there still is a fund balance, but it's only about fifty-nine percent. Of what the minimum fund balance is supposed to be for fire.
But, on the PowerPoint presentation that Rob just gave. It, it crossed out the three new firefighters that had been requested, because it couldn't happen. Because of this new status of the budget. Thank you.
You want me to, so, yeah, so it's just to clarify, so, you know, the budget wasn't deficit. So the budget did not have any available fund balance. That was corrected through the one point five million dollar transfer. So, at the end of twenty twenty-three, the projection is that you'd have an ending fund balance. Of eight hundred, or six hundred and eighty-two dollars. And then in twenty twenty. Yes, thank you. Thank you, whoa, yeah, big difference there. At the end of twenty twenty-four, as the clerk mentioned. We still have a positive fund balance, but we have deficit spending, meaning that expenditures. Are still exceeding the revenues, and that does exclude the three additional firefighters, and it does exclude. The transfers into reserves. So if you add those back in, the point being is that you use even more of your fund balance. Which eventually would lead you potentially back into a deficit unless revenues were adjusted accordingly as well. So that's the kind of state of the fire fund, if you will.
If I may continue.
Sure, go ahead, Rob.
Firefighters save lives. To be brutally honest, accountants don't. What do we do to fix this so that the fire chief can hire the three firefighters that he needs? How, how does, now I understand it's completely valid what you just said, but how do we get what we need for the fire chief?
I think we'll discuss that at our work session. I have some ideas to bring. Yeah, we have a few options.
Okay, um, Rob, are you concluded?
Awesome, thank you.
Alright, who's next?
Next is Jonathan Greenberg, followed by apology. Jonathan, go ahead.
Hey, y'all, thanks for the great meeting today. This has really been informative and well-run. I want to fully back the comments prior to me, Kathleen. Specifically around the four hundred fund, that one point six million dollars belongs in the hands of. SIO Township residents, as the law dictates, so please don't spend that money. My question is, we spend a lot of money on contractors and consultants, and. One of those, you know, for the attorneys and all those excessive expenses, but we also spend. A significant amount of money to a firm called Carlisle Wortman. To the point where we have them doing things that should probably be done by our own internal staff. Along that, I've had the experience of needing to have some ordinances enforced recently. And learned that we don't have an ordinance officer, that we actually pay a retiree who works through. Our contractor to enforce ordinances, and apparently only during certain hour. What are we doing? It seems like between the, the party barns and all these other issues that residents are having with development. And other changes in the area, what are we doing to bring an enforcement officer into SIO Township? To enforce, because, because you can pass all the, and have all the different regulations you want. But if, if someone's littering and they don't care about a fifty dollar fine, and they're just going to ignore you. You know, what, what can you do to help the residents enforce some of the ordinances that you've passed? And thank you very much. I'm sorry, is, is there anything in the budget for an ordinance officer?
Ordinance officer? I believe it's in the planning and place where we, where we contract the Carlisle. Where.
Yeah.
The. Enforcement officer is still here.
What do you mean by is still here?
I mean, he is still functioning in the same capacity that he has been functioning in.
But he retired in February and, and is not an employee, he's an employee of Carlisle Wortman, right? Is that correct? His contract.
Yes, that, that part's correct.
Okay, so why are we paying someone else to do this when we should be able to do this ourselves? Especially at like the rates that we're paying Carlisle Wortman.
The system that we have right now, I wouldn't suggest that it's the best system in place, but. That's what we're dealing with now until we can improve the system, and, and clearly, there is room for improvement. Although finding people to do this kind of work is no small task either, so. Until we can find a better situation. This is what we have to deal with now, the current status.
But I, I would say, I know, I know this issue's been kind of bouncing around, just, nobody has to volunteer right now, but we really do need.
But we really do need some leadership from the board here to kind of take this on. We have draft job descriptions, we need to get a job description approved by the board. And I know we've looked at some different options, but, but get an option. Because if, I mean, aside from the service and Jonathan, I saw some of the pictures and I am sorry for all the back and forth and thank you chief for putting out that fire. But, you know, our, our code enforcement also needs to be self-sustaining. So from a financial point of view too, we need to make sure that it's self-sustaining and that we're not just spending money to kind of push problems around.
Yeah, and Carlisle Wortman.
I was just gonna say.
Carlisle Wortman has somebody in their department or working for their company, Mike Radzak. And I have spoken, and I had a conversation with him, I think John knows him, other people know him. And, um, you know, Ralph is on his way out, he has been for a long time. So I think in the meantime, maybe we can talk with Mike and get some type of contract in the, until we can get somebody permanent.
Okay, let's move on, Paul G is next, I believe.
That's correct.
Am I unmuted? I don't know, Jonathan kept going and I wasn't sure if I.
You're unmuted.
We can hear you, Paula.
Okay, thank you. No, sometimes I go, our priorities in the township are, um, we've passed this millage for the, uh, now it's the PPP. And I, I look at it and I go, all these pathways and who's gonna maintain them in the future? And what's going on with this? Yet we can't fund, uh, the safety level of the fire department. Numbers that they need. I don't understand, yet we're going to hire two part-time interns. And I realize that their budget is full, but I go, that's the millage that was put in front of the people. But other millages, uh, to take care of other, to me are more concerning issues are not, uh, being addressed. And that's basically what I had to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
Thanks, Paula, next is J H, followed by David Reed. J H, you can go ahead.
Hello, everyone, this is actually Jan Colbertson. I'm not sure why I'm coming in as someone else, but anyway. Yeah, I, I just wanna say that, uh, I want to, um, from the planning commission and the environmental task force, that the board did pass a resolution to align our sustainability and climate action goals with carbon neutrality for township operations by twenty thirty and for the community by twenty thirty five. And as a part of, um, the budget, there are a couple facilities items. One is, we do have three rooftop HVAC systems that are at the end of their life. And we did get a grant through Eagle and did some retrocommissioning as well as looking at options. And, uh, there is a price tag for the replacement, which includes electrification, which is a part of a decarbonization strategy of three hundred and fifty three thousand dollars for replacing those units. We need to plan for that because they are at the end of their.
I don't know, I'm trying to figure out.
David, please mute yourself.
The other item is, um, the, uh, we've had, uh, I think, a forty thousand dollar, um, line item for recycling in the township. And it has not been used. However, there is an equity issue in that G F L does provide service to all single-family residences. And we do have some recycling gaps, um, specifically for multifamily. Also for, um, the mobile home community that we have. And the ability to either contract with G F L to bring back recycling at the township hall or at, uh, recycle Ann Arbor is open to doing some additional recycling at the Calvert's location. And I would, uh, want the trustees to consider, um, putting that back in the budget. The, a couple other items, um, would be, uh, the, the planning commission would like to be able to have a, a line item in the budget that would allow us to do two things. One is really looking at all of our ordinance with a sustainability lens. We have, um, a long list of things that we think we need to update. And in addition to that is also looking at the engineering specifications, which haven't been updated in a good length of time. So those need to come up to current standards, but also look at some sustainability things like urban wood re利, reutilization and, uh, employing some embodied carbon, low embodied carbon materials. So, um, we did have a discussion, uh, last night about, uh, some of those items. And those have, uh, we hope that you can incorporate those into the budget. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jan. And Jan, what is the rough number on that HVAC, HVAC work that needs to be done on the township hall?
It's about three hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, it's a lot, but it also includes that, I think what.
I know we need to do it.
Is it also improves, um, air quality and controls. And having that ventilation is really important, if, you know, as we went through COVID and so forth. So, yeah, and I'd be, and we have a full kind of study that was that we'd be glad to share and discuss.
Yeah, so does the grant pay for the HVAC? No, the grant paid for the study that Jan and a team did around here. They updated the lighting, but there's some pretty fun and big problems with our HVAC, so it needs to be done.
And I do think there is, uh, there'll, there'll be funding coming, um, especially from Eagle. And we may know more about that, you know, summertime in the fall, something like that. Because there are federal funds, uh, coming for those sorts of improvements.
Thank you, Jan. Or J H, as you now go by.
Incognito.
Right.
Thanks, Jan, next is David Reed, David, you can go ahead.
Uh, first, my apologies to Jan for interrupting her, the host told me to unmute, so I did. But obviously, that was premature, my apologies. I just want to continue, uh, on where Kathleen Brant was cut off regarding the spending of funds from, uh, spending of money from Fund Four Hundred. I believe the prior township board, of which I was a member. And I don't believe anybody on this board was on the board in twenty thirteen. But I was, and the intention of the board was to have the twenty thirteen S A D, Townshipwide Road S A D to be a ten-year, to be a ten-year program. And in fact, I believe it says in one of the resolutions, I think it says that that this, the, the, the spending of these funds are to take place within the ten-year life of the S A D. Now, the S A D is done, it was done as of December of twenty twenty-two, that was the tenth year. So it's done, and as John Greenberg said, that one point six million dollars should be returned to the residents. Because it's excess funds that was collected for the projects that were listed on the project list when the role was set. And as Mike Homier has told us, we cannot add projects to that project list once the role is set. So all of those, I don't know, eight or ten projects that are listed for Fund Four Hundred? I'm sorry, you can't, you can't use for, for, for Fund Four Hundred for those projects because it's done, the ten years are up. Now, we did, the, all of those, some of those roads are listed in the, in the, um, in the project list. But we've already done those projects, actually several times. And the only thing left to be done on the project list, as I said before, is the piece of Park Road from Stabler to Z for a gravel lift. Now, everybody wants to pave Park Road and that's fine and dandy, but you needed, you need a different mechanism to pay for it. You can't use the twenty thirteen Bund, the twenty thirteen S A D to pay for that because paving was not specified on the project list. And Act one eighty-eight is very specific, you have to specify what you're gonna do and how much it's gonna cost. We set aside two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred dollars for Park Road, and we've already spent about a hundred and forty thousand. So you only got about sixty seven thousand left. That's all you can spend from Fund Four Hundred on Park Road, and all the other projects are done. So those lists of projects, you cannot use those because, uh, again, the intent of the board was to have a ten-year, ten-year life of the S A D, and in fact, it talks about on the page that talked, that has the maintenance cost. It specifically says a ten-year maintenance program, and the ten years are up. So, you know, you can't, you can't spend it, I'm sorry. It, it, it has to be done. And one more thing, um, you know, what is more important to the township? To have a finance manager, or excuse me, a finance director? Or to have somebody who is called a deputy treasurer, deputy supervisor, pulling down a hundred and five thousand dollars a year and still drawing overtime, which is against Michigan law? So I'm, I'm curious, when is the board gonna actually do something? Actually hire a finance director, it's been, what, two years? I don't know, I can't, I've lost count.
November twenty twenty-one.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty, okay, so, okay, it's only been a year and a half, o- only been a year and a half. So, but we need a finance director, all of this back and forth, all this questioning, all of these issues with the budget. There should be one person who has all of the answers to that, not a consultant, not the mart manager, not the clerk, it should be the finance director. You guys need to hire a finance director, this is embarrassing. This town, the, Jesus, our, our taxable value is one point eight billion dollars and we don't have a finance director. How can you sleep at night and let, with, letting this township just basically go to hell without, without, um, financially? Because you guys don't know how to manage this money. But please, hire a financial director in the next quarter. And please, don't spend any more money from Fund Four Hundred. I think the State Tax Commission might have, might have a, a view on that. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
All right, then we'll declare the public hearing closed at ten oh four.
Take a five-minute?
Yeah, that's a good idea, let's take a five-minute break, um, we'll come back.
Do you expect to speak to the budget when we come back? I just want to.
I'd like, I'd like us to at least, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So we, we should ask Mr. Taylor to stay.
Yes, please. Yeah, and I think we also, Mark.
Calling the meeting back to order, please, everyone, take a seat. So, um, thank you, Rob, for staying, um, I guess this is the point where we, the board has some questions for you. More questions.
How to start out, is there anything you need from us by a certain deadline to get it updated for next, uh, Tuesday's consideration? When do you need comments, feedbacks, data, criticisms, compliments, et cetera? So that we can make the adjustments that we, I mean, you can make the adjustments that we're gonna approve or not approve, or still adjust next Tuesday.
Yeah, so, and that's a good, good question, you know, from my perspective, if I understand correctly, your packets go out on Thursday. Right, but the end of the day, Thursday, so.
Supposed to.
Which is a target, understandable. And, um, so that realistically mean, I would have to make any updates tomorrow, then adequately get back to you.
Next, we took, uh, if we wanted to get something posted finished product by the week from today. We got stuff to Rod by early Thursday, give a little bit more time. Because, as you all know, you, you change one number and it's got a kind of a ripple effect. We don't want him coming back to you and say, oh my goodness, we didn't understand the full implications of this change. With the idea that the package would be a little bit late getting out, later than.
Well, and I like that idea, um, by, by early Thursday, it's just that, at this point, you know, you've got seven people, right? I mean, you're gonna be getting different ideas coming to Rod, so then are we asking Rod?
The idea should come here, if it come to me.
Sure.
Forward them to Rod.
Sure, but then you could get different scenarios.
I suspect we wouldn't.
And so.
On occasion, not of one mind.
And so I, I just don't want to ask Rod to do too much work on, on, you know, scenarios. There may be some things that are, that, you know, Mark and Rod, you just kick back to us and say, these are policy questions and we may just go through, as you remember, we did two years ago, we did kind of budget amendments on the draft budget. And, and that actually, I mean, that is a process we're accustomed to doing motions, right? So that might be something that we go through iteratively.
I mean, you're suggesting, just so I'm clear, that that might occur.
On the twenty-first.
That could happen.
On Tuesday, yeah, yeah, because, I mean, just to kind of settle some of those questions, I just don't, I want to be mindful of your time and your time and just.
Well, and I think we also need to be mindful, and I'm not trying to discourage what you're suggesting. Sometimes, uh, a change here has implications other places and we just need be cognizant of, of that. And some, oftentimes, it's not the case, it, it's a, you know, it's a simple thing, but it, it depends on the nature of the change. I thought we would certainly try to accommodate that.
And maybe it'd be help, I'd like to too, if we could give all of our changes to Mark and then maybe Mark, you can just share those out on the twenty-first as part of it, here's all the things that were, you know, all the ideas that everybody gave, I mean, obviously, none of these are gonna be anonymous, so.
Perhaps when, when we gather them and forward them to Rod, I could forward them back to the board as well, you can see them then.
Well, I would expect that we would, I mean, in some ways, I think this works because we're, what we're getting is something we've already had, is just been right, so most of this is not going to change. And the things that are changing would be highlighted so that we could see what was different from what we're looking at now.
We also have to go through the authorized positions list. That's gonna.
Well, we.
Is that tonight or next?
No, I'm saying Tuesday, I'm just saying, thi- this is gonna take some time.
So we've got a meeting on the twenty-first and we've got this, the authorized positions list to go through. But I think it seems like a good approach to try, at least try and give to you, Mark, the, you know, suggestions for edits to this. And then, then you and Rod to sort of turn it around and give it back to us, instead of trying to do everything as a budget amendment.
Would there be interest in trying to adopt the budget on the twenty-first? Because twenty-first, if memory serves, it's a special meeting for the budget and maybe this too, which is part of the budget.
And that drives a lot of the cost, John.
If that's the, if that's the desire of the board, then we will make an effort to be ready on the twenty-first. Part of that, of course, will be to the extent that we can get information from board members earlier, the early, earlier, the better, so that, uh, in an ideal world, we wouldn't be making a lot of changes on the twenty-first, they would be made in advance of the twenty-first for review by the board. Before.
Right.
Okay.
Could we make it Friday morning?
Would that be? To, to get it to you by Friday?
He's gotta, then they gotta redo it all. He's got to, then they got to redo it all.
Unfortunately, I am off Friday because I have a site visit.
You're gone.
To University of Michigan for my daughter, who has been accepted to Michigan. So that's, we're doing a site visit Friday, so unfortunately I'm off Friday.
So we would need to get stuff to you by Thursday.
Yeah.
Mid noon Thursday?
Yeah.
That's not a lot of time.
The only concern I made.
We're not talking about, I, you know, I don't sense that there are tons of changes here either.
The only concern that I have is the consensus component of it.
Right.
Right? And so, right, my concern is that, so my suggestion would be this. One would be to send the information to Mark that you're interested in changing. What my approach would be, would be the fiscal impact side of that. And so then I can provide back a summary of what that fiscal impact would be. And then that way, then you guys could then evaluate that and make some, take some decisions. I agree with Mark. I mean, the problem we have here is that this is a condensed timeframe, so it's not optimal. But I think that might be the best way. The good news is, is as long as you're, um, uh, understanding and flexible on Tuesday, I could make a lot of those changes on the fly as you guys make decisions.
That's what I'm thinking.
And then we could then print the budget out, everybody could look at another version of it. But again, there's a little bit of error factor to Mark's point is 100% correct that sometimes there's things that impact other things. So there is a small chance that we may make some small errors, but you could adjust those in the beginning of 2024 once they were discovered, so.
I, I'd be comfortable with that as long as our record is clear. I mean, I think the deliberation is what's most important.
So just, just so we're clear, we would at least hope to, excuse me, hope to adopt a budget on the 21st. And there are two or three pieces to that. That's more than a one-step process. But, uh, that would be our goal. And even looking backwards from there, we would receive proposed changes, um, what did we say? By noon Thursday.
Yes.
And that doesn't preclude changes that might occur on Tuesday. Although we, the, the more information we can get earlier, the less likely there would be a, an error or an oversight or what have you. But the other aspect or the other piece of that would be that if, uh, we made changes on Tuesday, uh, there would, I mean, this budget is amendable. And so if we realize that, uh, something was left out or whatever occurred on Tuesday, if not like it's, we couldn't fix it. There'd need to be some recognition on the board's part though, that that may occur with this process.
The only thing I will add would be, Joe, I want to make sure that your notification for your, uh, special meeting is clear that it's not just a workshop session for discussion purposes. And it could include the adoption of the budget as well. Okay.
A, a clarifying question when I'm looking at this. Where is the best place to look for, um, authorized pay? Is it, is it this?
That you have there, so.
This one is what you're proposing? Okay.
What I did was the authorize, is this, this is my version.
It is.
Okay. Yeah, so what I did is so that everybody knows is that we have a worksheet that has the authorized pay on it. That then, any numbers that you see here in terms of authorized pay get driven to a separate tab that calculates the wages uh, and then the associated fringes with that position. So if we make any changes to this page, then it will flow through, um, uh, to change the, the impacts associated with that, which then links back to the budget itself.
So if there were changes to some authorized pay that I'd requested that aren't shown here, that means they're not recommended.
Correct. And so some of those authorized pays, because this is a budget, I've included a higher amount and I've noted in green there that the actual pay may be determined. I thought that was a better way to do it because that way it reflects kind of the maximum impact on the budget versus undershooting it, as you mentioned before, overestimating your expenditures. And so that would overestimate your expenditures. And then, then if they came in lower, then that's a, a win, I guess, for the township.
And I have a quick question for Steve. Is there a hydrant flushing program built into your budget?
There is not. That's just a man hours.
Okay. I'd be interested in seeing what that would cost.
But it seems like this is a good place to sort of close off. We have a plan for going forward, prepping, preparing for the meeting on the 21st.
Have a great work, Rod. Thank you. And I know Steph has really enjoyed working with you too, so thank you.
No, I mean, this is an important process and, and, um, it's not an easy process as well. So I commend you for all the work that you guys are doing on it. And again, the key takeaway is that it doesn't stop next week. This is something you continually tweak and modify and adjust. Um, you know, as revenues come in higher or lower, you need to continue to make adjustments along. So the process is a chronic condition.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move on to item, the unfinished business. The first item, we removed items J1 and J2, so the first item is J3. This is the SiO Ridge Road and Upland Drive Sidewalk Extension and Bus Stop Improvements. And, um, I, uh, I prepared this item. I did it on the, on behalf of township manager, so I will turn to you, Mark.
Thank you. We have Anna up here. She served for that.
Oh, yeah.
Anna, yeah.
I'm here where we can reach you.
Yeah, that's right. You're too far away.
We had intended to talk about this briefly at the last meeting. You know, so, uh, we want to talk about this, we hope, briefly for a couple of reasons. Number one, the project is a sort of a natural breaking point right now in the sense that the preliminary engineering is, is for the most part done. Uh, and the next step would be moving on to seeking bids for the project and that sort of. Also, we understand that this project started before everybody was, uh, before this group was all here. And we want to make sure that everybody understands the proposed project. Another reason is that, uh, we think probably the dollar amounts have changed a little bit just based on inflation and construction-related issues. And clearly, and tonight is an example of, uh, discussion about funding sources as well. Uh, this project was originally scheduled, estimated at $240,000 with 50% coming from the parts and pathways program and 50% from the township Y assessment. We said that, uh, uh, Anna, uh, frankly, this project was started before Anna got here as well. So, um, she is learning, uh, process wise at any rate. What this does is connect, um, parts of the Upland area that don't have sidewalks now. Probably three weeks ago or so, we took a walk, Anna and I and Rita and, uh, Mr. Townsend, took a walk and saw it. You can see the set of plans here. That's where we are. And, and from a project standpoint, the next step would be to turn those into specifications and bid. And as I said, this is sort of a, this is not a great right here. Uh, and we want to make sure everybody's on the same page and we're moving forward together.
This is great. First time we've talked about it at the board, so thank you.
So, um, I, I guess, I, I told Anna not to prepare a presentation. I thought this would take on a life of its own as soon as I shut up and I suspect that it will. Um, so if there are questions, uh, comments, whatever, Anna and I are here to try and answer them. We, we need to identify, do we want to keep going forward and if so, how?
And I want to understand what the project is. So the, we have in here the same consent. So this is the, what's in here is what we were, we paid Washa Engineering to do a year ago.
That's when the board talked about it, about a year ago.
Yeah, on the consent agenda. And so what did we get for that $38,000? Okay.
That sort of plan.
So Anna, generally speaking, what are the plans?
Generally speaking, the plans are to connect sidewalk gaps um, kind of along three main stretches. Can I see what picture you're showing? Okay, perfect. That's what I have as well.
This one?
Yeah, so if you, if you look at that, you'll see some blue dotted lines.
Okay.
Those are sidewalk connections. Those sidewalk connections also include in this plan safe bus stops um, that you heard folks talk about during public comment. And it is as simple as those blue lines, really. That's the project. That's what's indicated in this roll of paper right here.
So it's sidewalks were indicated plus some bus stops there.
Well, in, in addition to that, uh, there are crosswalks. There is some drainage, uh, because where the sidewalks are now, and at least in some of these areas, is a drainage ditch. Uh, some of it is relatively flat front yards, but, uh, part of it is a drainage. So there's, there's some earthwork. There's some, uh, storm shore work. There's some curb and gutter, uh, work as well. Uh, so part of the project, uh, was the pathways, sidewalk connectors. And part of the project is, uh, not that it is curb and gutter, uh, work. I think that simply to put these in everywhere is not just to put concrete on the ground. Some areas it's relatively simple and some areas it's more complex.
So Anna, this is, so I see where the sidewalks are and then where the sidewalks stop. So what would this do for people?
So as I know, we've seen in emails that got sent out and in public comment, we've heard the stories of children and adults alike having to walk in the middle of the road versus on a sidewalk um, or having to wait in the road for the bus instead of at a bus stop. So it would make people safer. It also, I think Roy mentioned this, um, and Chris mentioned this in public comment. It allows people to access each other's homes from one neighborhood to another. If there are friends in one community, they currently can't get safely to the other community. Um, yeah, so I'd say safety and access are two key features of this project.
I might call out in the second photograph here.
Yeah.
Uh, one can see, uh, part of the, the ditch work where, or the ditch where the sidewalk would end up going. So there's a fair amount of earthwork in there, uh, as well, just to get back to why it's not just sidewalk. Uh, because that sounds like a lot of money for some sidewalk. And it is, but there is more to the project than that.
And I guess historically, how come the homeowners haven't paid for this?
Let me, I can give a little bit of history.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Neither Anna nor I know that history.
Yeah.
Okay, so back in 2002, 2003, when I was first becoming involved in township activities, eventually ran for township office in 2004. Um, there had been concern in my neighborhood, the Uplands, because SiO Ridge Road development was occurring on SiO Ridge Road and no sidewalks were planned associated with that development. And then, of course, none were planned on Upland Drive. But at that time, our focus was more on SiO Ridge Road. And I was told when I spoke to a planning commissioner and board members that residents could walk through the other neighborhoods. So residents could walk through the Uplands. Well, that, that was the thinking of the planning commission and the board at that time. So that's the history I can share.
And, and why can't they?
They can't, but it's not as convenient intertwined.
I'm just trying to understand.
In the neighborhood because you have to go off course wherever, you know, it's not, it's not a direct route.
I see.
And you, it's just not the same. I mean, there would have been ample room on SiO Ridge Road to have put sidewalks in in that area instead of the trees that they put in, but it didn't happen.
And so who's, just so I'm understanding, because I know you two live there, so forgive me, but so, so whose property is this? Like who's, which developments are?
There are four developments there. There is, um, the.
But where we're doing the sidewalks.
No, it's, no, it's kind of.
Who owns that?
It's the ravines, it's the Meadowlands, it's the Uplands and Hometown Village. Those are the four right here.
But, but that, those four touched, sorry, I'm trying to understand, the blue lines?
Right.
Whose property is that?
The blue line would be the public right of way.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's not a particular HOA's responsibility?
No, no.
Okay, so these are, these are, this is a public space?
Yes.
R and W.
Um.
And just so I'm clear, we, I don't recall any necessary acquisition of land as part of this project. I guess I haven't asked that question. I'm looking at it. I don't think there's any, there's probably a public right of.
The discussion had always been road right of way.
Right, yeah. I, I don't think we get out of right of way at all.
So this is actually a small part of what could be done. So, but it's probably the most important part to do.
Why would you say that?
Because Upland Drive is the connector from multiple different neighborhoods leading out to SiO Church Road, Oak Valley, potential connection to Ice Cube, Pittsfield Library. Um, and there are more bus stops on SiO Ridge Road.
But we're not doing this, at least it's not planned a sidewalk out to SiO.
That is not on here. I mean, SiO Church.
It's long-term.
Yeah, that has been talked about.
It's long-term where?
SiO Church Road.
No, no, I know, but long-term.
In the pros plan, I think it is.
Is it in the pros plan, Anna?
That image from the pros plan.
Okay, so tell me about how this fits into the pros plan, please.
So this is the graphic that PPP has open at every meeting and is from the pros plan and it's kind of our grand map of potential projects. Um, so you can just see it in that, I have a lot of them actually. Would it help if I passed these around? The bottom right-hand corner. The bottom right-hand corner of this map will show uh, the SiO East Pathway delineated in a dark red color. And it shows how it can connect to this neighborhood up towards Jackson Road eventually and then to Zeeb and then south to Ann Arbor um, on SiO Church Road.
So that little bit of, I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out where I am.
Yeah.
The southeast corner.
Or waist, waist.
Sure, sure.
So the red dots are aspirational.
Yes, and they're red because they're part of what we've dubbed the Southeast Pathway.
Okay.
Everything red is part of the Southeast Pathway. Um, dots are potential pathway. And solid red is leading existing non-motorized pathway.
So going from SiO Ridge, that's all good, down to Liberty to walk and then.
No, Liberty's dotted to be, to be determined. That thing, that's where crosswinds or crosstrails.
No, no, I know that, but, but SiO Ridge Road, I'm sorry, John, SiO Ridge Road, you can walk down to Liberty. That's.
That's right, that's right.
That has a sidewalk there. And so this is just that little, so that would connect. Anna, if I'm understanding that this right, if I go down to where the dots start, does this project connect two more dots?
Um, roughly. I hesitate to like really map this project onto this kind of conceptual.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Dots, but roughly, yes, it's not that entire line of dots to SiO Church Road as you can see.
Yeah, it's a little bit of the dots.
Yeah, it's a little bit of the. Yeah, it's a little bit of the dots. So I brought this page and shared it with you all just to remind us all of the bigger picture in PPP and how this project really does fit into the bigger picture and if it's under millage expectations and requirements um, for a project. And all of those safety concerns are just very real.
So this would be a hundred percent two O A.
No, so I think that's when Mark brought up a few key questions to hit on.
Yeah, I, I, my understanding uh, was that the original plan uh, had an estimate of two hundred and four thousand dollars this project and that uh, that was going to be split fifty fifty um, parks, the PPP program is going to be responsible for half. And the Township Y S A D was going to be uh, responsible for half. So far, what we have is that set of plans, which is about fifteen thousand dollars. We've spent in round numbers fifteen thousand dollars on this project so far at any rate. So I think there are a couple of fundamental questions. I guess, do we want to do this project? And if so, how are we going to pay for it? The plan, and and the idea is it's probably not two hundred and forty anymore, it's probably three hundred. We don't know, we won't know until we s- seek bids if we go that far. But the next step in the process, if we want to proceed, would be to go back to the engineer who drew those plans and say, all right, turn those into a set of specifications and we will go competitively bid this project.
Mm-hmm.
When we receive those bids, we would know what it was going to cost for sure. Uh, but a fundamental issue that has, you know, come up repeatedly recently is the method by which we would pay for it.
And before we jump to funding it, I'm sorry, no, I just brought it up, but one, one more question about if we want to do it is maintenance. So, if we build it, how can we ensure somebody else is responsible for maintaining it?
Well, who's maintaining the pathways on Parkland Plaza?
I
That is a good question.
It is a good question. I mean, I think Steve left here. I, I think, I think and, and I know I had some concerns because I think that was kind of a handshake that we would maintain them and that's not sustainable and I don't want to start um, plowing sidewalks in little bits all over the township. So who, what are some ideas that people have had about how they'd be maintained?
Ohio law now, which I suspect is particularly relevant here, but generally, the, the and I think this is consistent in Michigan, there are people here who could correct me if I'm wrong, but generally, the, the property or adjacent to or budding the public right of way is responsible for keeping the sidewalk cleared and free from nuisance.
That's, that's true. And I, I would just say again, sidewalk ordinance, I guess, here's the thing. Is this a sidewalk or is this a pathway? And how do we make sure it's a sidewalk for the purpose of maintenance, but a pathway if we want to use the parks fund?
When, um, let's see, which did I want to hear? Just some history, um. The one that's on the far east side of this area.
What is it?
The Uplands. Uh, no, not that one. Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh.
Walnut, Walnut.
Up to, um.
But it's outside here.
No, no, no.
Ravines, Meadowlands.
There's another one.
Oh, the condos complex?
Walnut?
Yeah. At Hootown. Anyway, that's along
Hootown isn't in the far east.
Well, anyway, whatever's on the east side of SiO Ridge Road.
Well, that's Walnut Glen and Walnut View.
Okay.
There's some condos up there.
Okay, when that came through the township years ago, the whole thing was sidewalks. They wanted to put in a three foot wide sidewalk. No. You have to have whatever it is for all of the reasons we heard tonight. You know, people pushing strollers or maybe someone just walking. So that's where that it was determined that that was the width.
Okay, wait, there are sidewalks on part of SiO Ridge Road.
Yes, but I'm talking
Closer to Liberty.
Yes, yes. But that discussion came up, so when you're talking about putting them in, maintaining them, all of that was part of that discussion way back when. They need, they need to be wide enough to do what we have to do. And for people to use them.
Right.
So.
And I, I think that's why I wonder about our sidewalk ordinance, which I'm not familiar with, other than I know that it's supposed to protect the township from having to start maintaining sidewalks and it also provides a special assessment area. I'm also wondering, I wouldn't expect Anna to have this data. Um, if you do, bonus points, but I'm wondering who does have the data on all of the places that we don't have sidewalks? I mean, for example, SiO Farms, an entire development, nine hundred people know sidewalks.
But that's private.
Yep.
It's not us.
Okay, so that's private. So, I mean, other areas, like how do we know that this is where? And I hear, I mean, I'm sympathetic. We've got a lot of these, you know.
Well, I don't think we have them right now in trail wins. Well, we have them inside trail wins, but we don't have trail wins that were, what, what's that?
Are those pathways or sidewalks?
And I know that we're working on, that's in the works, that's what color is on, on the map here.
Who has that data? Is that something the road commission tracks sidewalks?
No.
I'm just wondering who tracks sidewalks?
The answer to one of the questions you posed earlier is that pathways, millage funds were always intended to be used for sidewalks and pathways. Pathways are typically eight feet wide.
Right.
Sidewalks are typically five feet wide. We've tried to push a standard of six foot uh, width for sidewalks, but um, you know, that's what we try to negotiate with developers. They always push back to five feet. Um, and in this instance, there were existing sidewalks in the SiO Ridge Uplands agglomeration of neighborhoods. And um, the intent in this was to build on those existing sidewalks as part of the overall network of pedestrian pathways in the township, whether it's a five foot sidewalk or an eight foot technical pathway, it's all part of the network.
Yeah, thanks, Will. I'll just add on to that, the language that I try to use a lot. I think it's simple, is non-motorized pathway.
Right.
Right? And so sidewalk is that, pathway is that, trail as well.
So who would maintain it?
Well, I can tell you the condo complex, I think it's Walnut Glen on SiO Ridge Road. They maintain the sidewalk on SiO Ridge Road. They have a contract with um, snowplow removal service and they have a small little um, snow machine because they use on that sidewalk. But in terms of private individuals doing it, I think it's, it's going to vary.
Well, could the HOAs maybe?
Of course, that's what they're going to do.
Get it together?
Yeah, that, that's because, I mean, I'm on the board of an HOA.
Yeah.
And although we have road commission plows our public streets, we hire somebody to hire plow our streets before the road commission comes authentically. So that would be, that would be an annual expense that would be borne uh, by, by the HOAs.
And that covers the sidewalks?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so you do cover your own sidewalks underneath?
No, we cover, we ha- we shovel our own, but we, we hire our roads out, even though we hire our roads on a supplemental basis, but we would have to hire this part of the sidewalks. We do our, everyone's
From the extension.
That's right, because, yeah, if it's not in front of somebody's house, then the, the HOA would just hire somebody when it gets two inches or whatever it is to come and just to plow.
And where's the um, the pictures of the kids?
Oh, yeah, so you guys, so
Right.
So if you look on, if you look at these photos, yep, number one, number one is the twenty ninth bus stop. Number two is the twenty sixth bus stop. You can see there in snowbanks. The next one, number three, are high schoolers' kids waiting for the bus to come right there at Oh, do you see, do you see?
No, I'm looking, I want to know on the map where
Oh.
Yeah, and where are the planned bus stops?
I'll come circle it.
Yeah, and do you read? Here.
Those kids.
Do you can read, please?
Yes.
In a way it'll stick out.
Those kids are right here.
So that's the only only bus stop?
No, there are three bus stops, three bus stops there, there and there. So those kids are, those kids.
Do you have the other? Oh, thank you. Do you, did you see that? You can't see it. No, no, that's okay.
Ah, yeah.
I think you're pointing at this. I know there's one there. There's one of this down here. One on each side. And so are the engineering plants put in bus, three bus shelters? Like what's going to be different about the bus stops?
Good question. Currently, there's no bus stop really, like it really just is a pole
Yeah, it's in the ground.
Oh, it's like
That says no stop.
So can I say something about the buses? There used to be four, but they, there used to be one across. So if you guys can just take a look, just walk through these photos with me. Uh, this is one of the bus stops. The first one, the twenty nine bus stop. That's picture number one. That's a bus stop. And then going to the another, the next number two is another bus stop. That goes northbound on Upland Drive. And then this next photo of two kids, uh, they're waiting, high school kids waiting for the bus stop. You can see the both bus stops here, one on the right, one on the left. The next photo of this kid is in high school. He's walking to the bus stop and they just walk in the road to get to the bus stop because that's where they have to walk. This is a, the next photo is another child or high school kid walking to the bus. The next one on, that says SiO Ridge and Upland, right there is a bus stop. And the next photo of a woman waiting in the snow for a bus, there used to be one across the street, but it was so water, there's so much water there, AATA took it out. There used to be four in that area. Now there's only three. They're not proposing a fourth, but that's a three. And then the last photo just shows lack of sidewalk. But um, I think they want to put not so much shelters in, is this pads? And Anna, I cut you off.
Oh, I see, sort of walkways to where you can stand and what
Yeah, that's right.
Like a, like a concrete place.
Like a pad or something.
Could be kept clear.
Yeah, like
Yeah, like a, yeah, just a safe place off the road to stand.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall any conversation with Washtetla Engineering in which we talked about a shelter. I just know that it would be a safer place to catch the bus off of the road.
And what sort of coordination do we have to, so it's not adding stops, it's just improving the stops? Okay.
And some of the work is creating crosswalks and, and the kind of handicap sort of access that you would have to the sidewalk from the street. Right? If I'm remembering and understanding the, the project correctly.
There are
ADA requirements.
There are ramps.
Right, the ramps.
The ramps currently are there, but they don't lead to the bus stop and they also are not ADA slope.
They stop in the grass.
Yeah, they stop in the grass and the slopes aren't quite right, so that would be part of the project here.
Well, we know from our experience with the uh, bus stops along Jackson Road that all of those inclines, getting them exactly right is crucial.
So.
So, you know, if I could say something, I, I live in this area and I know I've been following this since when Tav had it on their plate. This is a really dense s- s- portion of SiO Township. Why they aren't there, I think you could take a look back at whoever our planning uh, people were in whenever this was developed and they, they said, let's build sidewalks and just stop it and not make them have to go and connect with the sidewalk across the street. I think you give a developer a break where they don't have to link sidewalks. I think it was short-sightedness on some of our predecessors in planning or on the board not to require these. Back in there, it was like, well, we don't want your neighborhood to go to our neighborhood. We're our own little enclave. And that's kind of a silly way to do things now when we should be more interconnected. In addition to these four subdivisions about which we're talking, there's Walnut View and there's Walnut Glen. And then there is, there's some really dense apartments. There's the sage and whatever that is, sage of, and then there's the Arbor. Then these, the Arbor Circle. And then uh, that we got a letter from some woman who lives in a condo on, 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 on Liberty. There's condos there. So I know that there, there's just so many people that recreate here and use this for running. And it's just, I think the right thing to do for the residents in such a dense area. And, and I appreciate how, what, what good are sidewalks if they're not maintained? If they're not shoveled and we can certainly and impress upon homeowners and condo associations their obligations to get these things snowed in the winter and use our ordinance officer enforcement as a vehicle.
Yeah, yeah, I just, well, I just don't want to, yeah. And, and I was just speaking from the past experience with Parkland Plaza where we, we built something and then there was the expect, expectation that poor Steve was out there, you know, pushing the snow off of it.
I also, I also think that there are um, a number of funding mechanisms that can be used to fund, to fund appropriate portions of the project. In other words, you could use part of the AATA millage to, to, to fund a concrete pad for that. You could use part of the concretes, you could use part of the, the uh, the paths to do the paths. Whether it's all paths, I don't know. I think some of it
ARPA funding.
ARPA, but I, I think also some of it could be honestly uh, road sad because uh, we could, we could go back and hit this again. There's no prohibition from going back and using it. I know there's interest to return that to people and some of that money.
Um, there's been new, new information that is waiting to get to Mike.
And that could be, so that could be, but, but I'm just saying, we should avail ourselves of all lawful and appropriate methods to fund this project.
I agree.
If something's not lawful, if something's not appropriate, then it shouldn't be. But we should be as broad-based as we can to lawfully spend the money that we have collected for these special projects. That's, that's just my opinion. I know Donna, you have some opinions on the tenure sad and when that started and when that goes on.
Well, I'm going to check the S A D program. We started collecting what was it, thirteen December, yeah, winter? December thirteen, but we were collecting ahead, so the actual working period started in fourteen. So when you're talking about the ten years, we ended collection with this tax bill that you got in December, but we have this coming year to do the work. I need to check though
Yeah.
the S A D.
And Donna, one thing is, I, I checked, Donna, if I could, I did check this a while ago. We began expending the funds in thirteen fourteen. Those S A D funds, because I went back, this was a month or so ago. I went back to the book.
I have it right here.
And I
It could be just so you know.
We were doing work. Yeah, exactly.
Ended up, you know.
Because I was trying to think, you know, maybe there's some wiggle room and then I realized that it's gone. So, okay, so aside from, yeah, go ahead.
So in terms of, we're going into funding issues and I, I don't have the answers, but my understanding is there are some different versions of what was out there in two thousand thirteen.
And I found the original version that has a clerk's stamp and seal and signature.
Yeah.
Just recently and Friday in the Township Y S A D. And, and I have to say, I've had a email to Mike, which he hasn't responded to for three weeks where I said, Mike, I don't know who gave you those two lists. This one's right, that one's not. You know, and so, and then
We have to clarify this.
I know we do, but I also don't think we have to, you know, feign more confusion than we actually have. Because even if we look at all of the lists together, they're not so different. And so let's take, for example, the And so let's take, for example, the Uplands item. How, how is it to be interpreted that it includes bus stops when it wasn't bus stops, just as an example?
I wouldn't, I would not think that it would. I would think that it wouldn't.
Oh, okay.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't purport to use that for bus stops. I wouldn't purport to use it.
Yeah, no, I.
For sidewalks.
For, for, okay, so what, what would it be used for?
It would be to the exact.
I mean, possibly.
Curb and gutter, because that's the road.
Well, I have the, when they did work on Syo Ridge and Uplands, so in what Mike had said, that within the project, what the project was meant to do. So I have it from the original in two thousand fourteen with the, what our agreement with WCRC and what they did on that, that, on your area over there. So it is work to include pulverizing, shaping and compacting the existing surface, milling the placement of three-inch hot mix asphalt resurfacing limestone shoulders and project restoration. And it's the same for the Uplands. So this is where we need to have Mike go through all of this, because there's lots of new information.
And, and, and I appreciate that. What I, what I think, what I would like the board to do is to commit to proceeding with the project and funding it through all lawful and appropriate policies. That's, that's what, that's what my ask of this board would be, that, that we, that we support Anna and, and the plan. What's?
It's already, it's already going.
No, no, it's not already going. We paid for engineering.
Do more.
I mean, this is the first time we've talked about it as a board, so I, I would say for me, because I, I hear the merits of this project, okay? So let's just talk about the project and pretend we had appropriate lawful money to use for this.
That's what John just said, only different words.
Yeah, and so what I would want, though, in order to support John's ask here, is some data. So I'm hearing, you know, there's a lot of people here. I mean, there's a sidewalk gap, so again, I just want some data that demonstrates the need. Is it the bus ridership? Is it the number of children? And you don't have to show me more pictures of kids standing, so I get it. I mean, that's, nobody wants anybody to get hit. But how do we know that?
This is the most densely populated.
Yes, that's just what I was gonna say.
We know that, we have that information.
We know that. No, 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 I know, I know, so it's. But I'm just saying, is, would hurt, and what, because Kathy, because part of it too is just the. Part of it too is just the precedent, right? Like, is this the first of several of these little projects?
Well, we don't know that right now.
I mean, I. No, 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 I know, I'm just, I'm just wondering, because like, this doesn't even get you to Syo Church Road. You know what I mean? So I'm just wondering, like, where are we going with this?
But it is.
It's here.
For the same unit kids.
Yeah, but, but Will, there's so many dots all over Syo Township. I mean, we've got miles of dots.
Yeah.
This is the densest part of the township.
We will help many, many people.
We have put pathways in, they're hardly used.
Oh, no, I know. I do support that.
Yeah, and, and there's kids involved, you know, that's the other thing.
Yeah.
What about us all folks?
I know, I know.
Part, part of this, part of this, this discussion is, is sort of the conundrum of building pathways, right? You build a pathway a segment at a time, and when you're building the early segments, it does seem like, gosh, you know, this isn't really that useful, because you know, how are we gonna get across the river? We can't get across the river yet. When you can get across the river, then that zebra pathway is gonna have a lot more traffic. It already has quite a bit of traffic. I think people I know are looking at it when they don't see anyone on it, and they think, oh, this is, no one's using this. But it gets used a lot. And anything that you build, any pathway segments that you build, they do get start, start, people start using them right away. It's just, it's this particular segment, I think, probably, you know, for a short segment, is gonna have a bigger impact than just about anything else that we could spend money on. And I think, you know, to, to question whether people will use it, when we have obvious evidence that people will use it, I think, you know, it's sort of inventing a problem to solve that we don't really need to solve.
So this has been sitting for over ten years. I mean, even at the PPP Millage ballot questions, you know.
I remember when this came in, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and it was just, and it was that question of, and Alex Jerome was on the other side of it. How do we not have the Parks Village become a sidewalk gap filling fund? And that's, that's just fundamentally, and, and I'm not saying this is going down that path, but it's a fair question.
I think everything's gonna have to come back to us. You know, part of this, I think, is to make up, like, how could you have a forty-five mile an hour road that kids walk across without a damn crosswalk? It's astounding.
Right.
The, it's, it really is.
Oh, I agree.
Anna was up there. So I would like to make a motion. It is that as the Syo Township Board of Trustees approve the construction of the Syo Ridge and Upland Drive Sidewalk Improvements Phase One as set forth in the plans developed by Washnaw Engineering, and that the Syo Township avail itself of all lawful and appropriate funding sources for various aspects of the project.
So we have a motion by risers, support by plumer. Further discussion?
So clarification, the construction.
That would be the implement, the construction, the implement the plans to build the thing.
I thought we were gonna get bids.
We are, we're going to.
So we're going to use the engineering that we have.
Yeah, we're gonna.
Have the engineering first.
Yeah, like what we do, though, because that's in here in the packet, right? So we're gonna use their.
That was the proposal for the engineering.
Yeah, oh, right.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we. The contract for engineering has two parts. The first part is to do the design work, which is, that's the product of the first part. And the second part of, of the contract for engineering is to create a set of specifications, go through the bidding process, and then for the engineering side, do construction administration or inspection during construction to take the project to its conclusion. But, so that's the engineering piece out, but then there's a construction piece. We would bid that out, and there would be a contractor hired, and the engineer would inspect their work. So the, the engineering contract is, we've authorized thirty-eight thousand dollars. I think the contract is really thirty-two or thirty-three. The, the estimates were at two forty. I think that's probably low in today's market. So the big number obviously would be the construction, but that would be the process.
And so that would come back for authorization, because what I'm hearing John say is authorizing construction tonight.
I'm committing to the project, authorizing construction, and that includes obviously getting bids.
We would come back to you when we got bids to authorize.
To authorize construction.
Contract with the Acme Construction Company. We, we would not go out and contract, sign a contract without authorization.
And Anna, are you prepared to manage this as part of the pathway project?
Yeah, this is currently, would fall under my position. And then in the PPP budget, I did put a part-time project manager to support me with projects like this.
We have also recognizing that Anna's job suffered from some mission creep here since she got here. I think we get told her repeatedly that she is not alone, and so we will not have her out there without adequate support. And a large part of that would be the engineering firm, which is under, under our contract. They, they would be responsible for keeping track of quantities and estimates. They would be responsible for pay estimates, and that's.
Sure, sure. And no, and I understand that, it's just, you know, I also want, you know, we hired this great director, and I also want her to be able to direct the initiative. So I hope that this is one of the last projects she has to inherit. And, and that she, we can start hearing her projects for us.
I've been trying to consider some management, so this would be a great experience for her. This, this is a plan that has been worked on by lots of people, and yes, it's, I guess, sort of inherited. But, you know, there's parts of it that I would assume, because it's in the bros' plan, that Anna will be working on, she's not gonna throw it out. Is that what you mean?
No, Will. Done that. You would have had to. Okay, and so the, and, and my understanding too of the, so, so we can talk about the funding. I have to say that the implication that we use ARPA is then we're gonna have to, you know, bid out, do the single audit. And so, I mean, that's a budget conversation we should have on the twenty-first.
Who's talking about ARPA?
I, I mentioned it.
She mentioned.
Well, it's, because Will, you're, you're talking about what's planned, and it's what you've been thinking about, and this is the first time we've talked about it. And that's okay. I will say, Anna, like, it looks to me that, you know, most of this is gonna have to come from two oh eight. Is my opinion. You know, there can be other opinions, and they may be right. My assessment is about eighty percent of this will probably come from two oh eight at the end of the day, maybe a little bit from bus, if not ARPA. And then we have the bidding and things, but I don't see much of anything coming from the bus fund, because, you know, there's little bits.
Yeah, some concrete.
And Fund four hundred is, is fraught. So I just don't wanna overly burden two oh eight and get in, get in too deep with that. So, but if it fits the mission of the pathway, then I'm behind you on it.
There are no further comments, please call the roll.
The motion, and then the second.
No, you.
Donna, do you mind?
Right, right, I'm sorry.
It was, it's a while ago, wasn't it?
I'll give, the, I move that the Syo Township Board of Trustees approves the construction of the Syo Ridge Road and Upland Drive Sidewalk Improvements Phase One as set forth in the plans developed by Washnaw Engineering, and that Syo Township avail itself of all lawful and appropriate funding sources for the various aspects of the project.
Right, so move by risers, support by.
And this is called Phase One? There's a Phase Two.
Yeah, I think the.
I just hadn't heard that before.
Phase two, isn't Phase Two taking it down to Oak Valley or something, Anna? I'll leave that up to Anna.
There is no official Phase Two, but I'm aware of, however, if you look at.
Yeah, this is confusing, John.
If you look at the map, you can logically see other phases that could exist.
Called Phase One.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Somebody named, somebody named. Yeah, yeah. So on the pink letter, it says.
You are right that on the plans, it does say Phase One.
Matt Parks? Is that what you said?
Oh, that would be great.
Yeah, Matt, please.
Hey, everybody. So I don't have anything to do with this project, but there seems to be a lot of confusion over the process. I would just, I would highly recommend you authorize the seeking of bids with the completed plans as prepared by Washnaw Engineering. You guys go do that, then Anna will come back with a recommendation of a word with a contractor and a CE Services proposal that would oversee the contract in a separate, two motions on a separate board. So it's the same thing that OHM does on all of our projects, it's just all out of order. So all you need to do, all you need to do tonight is just authorize the seeking of bids using the completed plans as prepared by Washnaw Engineering. That's it.
But the question I have is, are we then committing to the project, Matt?
No, no, you don't want to until you open bids, because you could get three bids that are five million dollars each. So you don't wanna commit anything, you wanted to seek bids and then come back.
Nice.
Then commit.
Matt's, I would support Matt's motion, I would not support John's.
Well, Matt doesn't have a vote on this board.
I know.
With all due respect to Matt Parks.
I know.
And I understand that.
Telling you.
But, but what I'm worried about is, what I don't want is this to be some sort of delay, and I have, that, I wanna commit to the project. So, so I would say I would approve the, can we say, approve the plan for construction? How about the plan for construction? Because it's not the construction.
We don't have a plan for construction.
Yeah, don't we? Well, no, we.
I think, I think seeking, authorizing the seeking of bids using the plans and specifications as prepared by Washington engineering really, really sets you up.
Seeking, how about this, approves, seeking the authorization of bids for the construction.
There you go, that's fine.
Authorize the seeking of bids.
Authorize the seeking of bids for the construction. All right?
Yep.
Seeking, approved, seeking, seeking the, seeking bids for the construction of the Syo Ridge, and it continues on, and Upland Drive Sidewalk Improvements Phase One as set forth in the plans developed by Washnaw Engineering, and that Syo Township avail itself of all lawful and appropriate funding sources for the various aspects of the project.
Yep.
I, I wanna, I wanna leave that in there.
What does avail mean at this juncture?
It, it means avail itself of, to use, to use all sorts, at this juncture.
Keep our options open.
Yep.
Well, well, they are.
Well, and, and, yeah, and to, it's fine.
It's not meaningful, but I think that's what makes it fun.
The biggest difference and the reason why you guys are struggling with this one is because normally in a design contract, it, we would include bidding services as part of that. And that was never done a year ago when Washnaw Engineering was authorized. So now you're in this limbo of, you have to seek authorization for bids, that's all.
And also, we, we, and John, just so you know, and, and Mark, this is something for you and Anna to think about. We don't have much experience doing this, because OHM does a lot of this. So I'm a little nervous about taking on the bidding process for this, because it's kind of complex.
Well, Anna's gonna oversee it.
The contract has a second phase, and that's taking it from here through to construction, so. So actually, it is, it does include bidding.
Oh, so it does include bidding?
In front of me, but I read it earlier today. Is that, no, that's.
Let me see.
What, for engineering? Yeah, and, and by the way, how did Washnaw Engineering get this job? Did we ever bid out? It was approved on May tenth, but then their invoice says April fourth, so it was like, somebody was dealing with them before this even came in front of the board. So did we go out for bid?
Attached to our packet is the contract for the terms from April. And they talk about engineering surveying and construction documents, construction staking, engineering, and observation.
It says project number six, part one, number six. Project will also be sent to contractors for bidding.
With a construction expectation date of late fall twenty twenty-two or spring twenty twenty-three, so.
But that's the bidding. I think the way that Washnaw Engineering, right, Will, that the project will also be sent to contractors for bidding, is that they're offering bidding services?
Do you have access to our packet or board packet, Matt Parks?
Yeah, you, but I don't have it pulled up, hang on.
I mean, this is a question for Joe.
Yeah, it's, it honestly is, because we're getting into their contract.
Yeah, I don't want him to interpret their contract, John.
I'm not asking him to interpret a contract. I don't wanna have a redundant resolution. If we already have, project will also be sent to contractors for bidding with a construction expectation of late fall twenty twenty-two or spring twenty twenty-three. And then construction staking, engineering, and observation.
Makes me a little nervous, John, with what we just went through with the bidding with the SADs through Washnaw Engineering. I mean, just because this is a big number.
No, I, I, I appreciate that. So the, approve the seeking of bids for the construction of Syo Ridge and Upland Drive Sidewalk Improvements Phase One as set forth in the plans developed by Washnaw Engineering, and that Syo Township avail itself of all lawful and appropriate funding sources for various aspects of the project.
Is that acceptable to you as the second?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a friendly amendment of the original motion. Please call the roll.
I just have one more question, John. So is that, is that an appropriation? Or is it that we would get the bids back and then decide if we're gonna fund it?
I wouldn't, well, I wouldn't.
I'm just curious about.
I wouldn't think it's an appropriation, because we haven't, I don't, can you do a, an appropriation with a blank check?
No.
No.
Don't do that.
That's my point, I meant that rhetoric. No, no.
So it's not authorizing the funds, it's not committing any. So it's not authorizing the funds, it's not committing anything.
Not until we have the bid.
Well, I.
I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to get clarity.
I understand that, but I'm, I'm committing to this project. Uh, once we get the bids and they're, you know, we, we have competitive bids.
You're committing to it no matter the dollar amount or source.
No, no, not at all. But I think we should commit to the, to this project. Obviously, we're gonna get the bids.
I mean, I would support it except for your, your last clause there.
What is that?
That again, the, the.
That Sciou Township avail itself of all lawful and appropriate funding sources for the various aspects of the project.
You wanted to avail ourselves of unlawful funds?
No, I'm saying I'd like to take the first step of seeking bids for construction. Have it come back. We'll see what elements come in.
We would.
One step at a time.
Come back to this group.
Let's commit to it.
Authorized to get authorization for a contract.
But isn't part of the question here tonight?
No, I wasn't going to, but now I might add that. But if, if I need to say that avail itself of all lawful or appropriate sources for the various aspects of the project up to four hundred thousand dollars, then I would do that. Cause if we thought it was three hundred thousand dollars and it's gone up or two hundred forty thousand dollars, it, it said, it said on here.
I'm happy to support taking the next step of authorizing bids for construction. We'll find out, things will come back. We'll look at it. We'll decide if to proceed and how we fund it.
John, put, how about this, add in with, um, board review or if you wanna.
It's always gonna have more.
Yeah, well, when it goes to bid, then it's gonna come, the votes are gonna come back to us, right? Jess, what is your concern?
My, my concern is, is, it's a, it's a, well, a dual purpose motion and the second purpose is rather unorthodox and fuzzy. And it talks about funding. And then John keeps saying, I'm trying to commit to this. And I don't, that's not a thing.
It's like a statement of intent.
To
move forward.
And how is that different than authorizing the bids for construction? We could authorize the bids for construction and direct the Parks Director to include proposed revenues and expenditures in her budget. I mean, something like that.
What's wrong with what he asked?
Avail, that the board will avail itself of funding opportunities. It's, I mean, one, we always will do that. Two, avail is not an operative word. It's not an appropriation or an authorization. Three, we don't know how much money we're talking about. And it sounds awfully close. Right, so it's not, so why avail?
Intent. That holds our options open.
We, we always have options. I'm just saying avail is somewhere between appropriate and authorized. And unless we're using the term appropriate or authorized, I'm not gonna start getting in this fuzzy, fuzzy verbs when we're talking about money. I think it's messy, Kathy. So I'm, I'm good with the first part.
Well, so you've made it very clear what your objection is. Why don't we call the roll and see if we have the votes to pass it as John is, and, and.
Like, listen, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to work with you here. I really am here. And I could say, shall, and, and I appreciate, I, I'm also willing to put a dollar figure on here, up to four hundred thousand dollars.
What does avail mean?
Then I would say the township shall use, instead of, shall expend.
That's an authorization.
Okay, shall expend.
This is getting farther away, John.
All lawful and appropriate funding sources for the various aspects of the project.
So we can dip into the general fund?
No.
I said all lawful and appropriate.
Okay, so you're, you're talking.
That's gonna have to come back to us.
Villages and whatever.
Yeah, villages, grants, others.
Oh, grants, okay.
There could, there could be, there could, there could be grants, there could be villages, there could be general funding, there could be ARPA, there could be.
Here's what I think. I think it'd be great if, you know, we, we proceed with the seeking of bids and ask somebody who would have the information such as Anna or Mark to come back Tuesday twenty-first when we're doing our budget with some proposed budgets for how we might do this, so that it would be in the next budget, John.
We gotta, um, we forget the word. Written down here somewhere on a sticky note, which is probably in the back of Donna's purse or something. Oh, here it is. Um, cost estimate. Is there some way to get a cost estimate?
If we get a bid.
Well, we have a cost estimate of two hundred and forty thousand dollars, although that's old and we suspect that it is low.
Oh, I see.
When we, when we.
Oh, Matt has his hand up.
Get a, uh, I mean, we're not far from having a bid where we won't, what we estimate will be an actual cost. I mean, you know, uh, Mr. Townsend was suggesting that two forty was low. It was perhaps closer to three hundred now. That's hard to say. It depends on a host of things. So here's my concern. I don't want it to come back, oh, we can't afford it. Oh, we can't afford it. Cause price is always gonna be going up on construction. I want us to, to bite the bullet and figure out how to fund it and to do it. That's, I'm worried about that, oh, gee, we were expecting two forty, it came back at two eighty, it came back at three hundred, it came at three ten. That's what I'm, I'm worried about the, oh, the sticker shock because of the delay. This was supposed to have been done a while back according to the plan.
Should we spend on Zebra, Kathy?
That, that's.
So John, but it's kind of a concern.
John, I think that, I think we address that problem by knowing that we have enough appropriate lawful funding budgeted for this possibility. So that would be.
And I don't like the fact that you keep saying possibility. I want it to be a, a, I want it to be a certainty. I want us to commit to this, to this budget once we get the bid. Commit to this project once we get the bids.
So why don't you go with your motion with the figure up to four hundred thousand?
Okay, the, the township.
We have the votes for it.
That Sciou Township shall expend all lawful and appropriate sources for various aspects of the project up to four hundred thousand dollars.
And then we can review it if it goes over.
Yep.
But Matt has his hand up.
Yep.
So.
Well, first let me clarify, is that acceptable? Okay, so, so the motion is, is a friendly amendment, it's a friendly amendment to the motion, Matt?
Uh, yeah, I'm just trying to make a couple suggestions. This, you really shouldn't deviate on your, your contractor bidding process from project to project regardless of what engineer you're working with. You should publicly advertise this. You should bid it. And the board is never, I mean, usually you have an engineer's estimate and it's in your budget, right? And so you've never, ever made a motion with a dollar figure that's public. So now the contractor knows exactly what you're willing to spend up to. So you're, you're kind of, you're kind of messing up the whole process. So just, just seek bids and come back with a recommendation. Anna will recommend it or not. And I mean, honestly, you don't wanna overpay. And in this market right now, when you're bidding something, it's March already. I mean, you're at a situation where you, you might be overpaying and you might wanna reserve the right to rebid it next year. Um, if the prices aren't right. So again, I, I totally agree with the project. It's super, super important and warranted. I've driven up that road and I'm not doubting any of that, but stick to your process. This is, you guys are deviating and creating it more complicated issue than what it really is. All you need to do is seek bids. Seek bids and that's it. And come back in two weeks or four weeks. It's probably gonna take at least four weeks to get bids and make a recommendation.
And get it budgeted.
And, and, and get it budgeted. So they'll be back in April with the recommendation. And I would have Washita Engineering update their engineering stand, uh, estimate ASAP.
Okay, so, um, I'm, I guess, do I, I'm willing to strike the second clause, but do I have people's commitment that they're gonna fund this worthwhile project at this table?
You have mine.
You could add it.
Okay.
Of course.
Yeah, so, all right, I'm, it's gonna be, I move that Sciou Township Board of Trustees approve the seeking of bids for the construction of the Sciou Ridge Road and Upland Drive Sidewalks Improvement Phase One as set forth in the plans developed by Washita Engineering, period.
That'll be with you?
Yes.
Okay, please call the roll.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, we have a question before us at this point because of the time, uh, whether to proceed with the rest of our agenda. It's after eleven o'clock.
I make a motion to proceed.
When are we gonna discuss it? Cause it's eleven thirty. We have a, we have a lot to go here.
I said, I, I made a motion to proceed with the agenda.
Right, so is there a second?
We have the fire levy and O P E B. We have some of the most critical work in front of us. That was a discussion item. I have a motion to proceed with the agenda.
Well, can we, can we do them on the twenty first?
Well, let me ask this question. Is, is there gonna be a lot of discussion about O P E B?
No, not for me.
Guys, let's move.
So, so, I, I'll, I'll go till eleven, I'd go till eleven forty-five.
Yeah, you can walk out whenever. I mean, we'll get it done. I think we'll be done.
Okay, let's try.
Do I have a second?
Reevaluate at eleven forty-five.
Yes, Anna has her hand raised.
Oh, Anna. I able to ask a question that's still about this project or will that have to come out?
I would draw my motion.
Forty-five, we got business we gotta do tonight.
You do?
Is it a quick?
So.
This is a quick question. Just with the budgeting process, I'm still unclear what percent of this project will be PPP?
Yes.
T D D.
You're right, it's unclear.
We're not gonna go down that path.
Yeah.
My guess is eighty percent.
For Monday, or rather Tuesday.
Yeah, okay.
We're taking bets on the percentage.
Your uncertainty is verified.
All right. A motion to continue to finish our agenda.
Well, go to eleven forty-five. Yeah, there's a couple that I think that we could move to another.
Well, our rules say we, we finish our agenda or not, I think.
Well, but now that you wanna take time, you can go and look and see.
No, really, and then if people leave and we lose quorum, then we do.
Yeah.
Don't guilt trip, don't guilt trip.
I'm not guilt tripping.
Yeah, you are.
No, I'm, no, I'm totally not.
And if we lose quorum, we do. Listen, I'm, I'm trying to work with you. I think the O P E Bs are gonna be quick, almost consent agenda.
John, John, I was not guilt tripping you. That was not personal. I'm just being, so you guys, I'm, I'm happy to proceed.
Okay, let's proceed. And then if we get to a certain point that we got to, let's just do it.
Anybody objecting to proceeding right now or what are we doing, Mo?
Well, I was trying, I was trying to look up your question and, um, it sounds like people are willing to move forward and we'll revisit, uh, as we go, I guess. Cause anyone can make a motion to adjourn at any time.
Yeah.
We've already raced it five minutes, fifteen minutes.
Right, we have, we are really good at wasting time.
You can walk up and adjourn, you can do anything.
So the next item on the agenda is J four. This is a call for special election on November seventh twenty twenty-three and placement of proposal regarding fire services assessment. I'll turn to, uh, Mark to introduce, uh, this item.
This comes from a discussion that they had, uh, most recently, at the last meeting, I was directed to work with Fire Chief was about putting together what would be considered by this board to be on the agenda. We have done that. There are two options before the board. One is a one question option, one is a two question option. You have seen them, uh, to P eight three, there is no, uh, one eighty-eight assessment. The one question option is four point five mills maximum for a period of twenty years. The other option is three point five for twenty years and point five for ten.
Three point seven five.
Both under P eight three, both require an annual public hearing to set the amount. So those millage amounts I just mentioned are maximums, not Lucy.
Oh, we did that. So we've been millaged tonight, setting the public hearing.
What we would be doing tonight is picking one of those two options or picking not to do either of them, then placing them on a ballot. Placing one of them on the ballot is in the way.
And Donna, it would set the maximum.
It would set a max. Under either option, a maximum would be set, uh, and, but annually then as, as required by P eight three, there has to be a public hearing. Um, and a, a mill rate would be established under at that maximum for below. And then trustee Carrie, I saw you.
Oh, um, yeah, so I have, I sat through most of the committee and read through the reports and everything. And, um, as you know, support the fire department. So I had, um, when I read this, and this was a little bit different than what I had remembered in the report. And so I had some concerns. I did talk to Chief Hood. Uh, in the twenty years, I was just like, ah, having anxiety, like twenty years, oh my gosh. Um, however, um, the original was, um, for the three point seven five was five years and then for the cap, that, that's for operations. The capital was, I think, point six seven for fifteen years. And that, I still struggle with that. However, um, for, these are, there's two different resolutions. One has two questions, the other one has one. Um, I am in support of the first one and the reasons why the, with some changes to the ballot language. Okay, so the, the first, or the change that we discussed and is the first one, if you read it, and I'm, I'm coming from a resident that knows nothing, you know, so if I read this as a resident, I'd be like, oh my God. So the first one is about operations. So I, I feel that we need to have that language in the first and then in the second one, capital. And then, um, now it's adjusted annually. This is really a special assessment, but it's calculated under a millage. So, um, that's, there's gonna be a lot of education with that. Um, the other one, having twenty years, and, and the other thing is, oh, the capital, there's bonding, that's, that's, we would have to do. And that's why it's so far out. Um, as far as capturing. So I think there was, was that, there was something else that I left my notes at home or it's stuck on. So yeah, I have a bad habit of.
The chief shared with me one of your ideas and I wanted to make a suggestion.
Sure.
Um, and it's looking at the first one, the two question one. We have the heading of fire services and expansion. What if we have a subheading above that first question that just says operating question? And a subheading above the second one that says capital question.
Yeah, I, I would like it.
So that, you know, for voters, you could, you know, have the operating question and capital question.
And also with the capital, because it is bond, it's a bond, um, to have that in there because, okay, well, why do we have capital at point seven five mills for twenty years? Why, why? And again, coming from a resident that doesn't study this.
I would be concerned about adding bonding to the ballot language. I don't know, Mark, chief, do you have other ideas? I think that's important education, but I don't know if I'd wanna.
I would presume that, uh, the township would borrow money to make the capital improvements and there would be a debt service related to paying off that debt over twenty years. And the, the, uh, the village rate would probably be fixed because a- after things settle out, it'll probably be the same amount of money every year presumably. So the village, uh, rate, uh, would be, well, actually, the rate might change as the tax, the tax, uh, passable value goes up. But we, there, there'd be a certain amount of money that would probably be very predictable. That'd be raised every year.
But, but Jillian, that costs of purchasing, constructing, providing, that could be done?
That part might change. It will be more than just.
Yeah, I would, I, I think this illustrates the problem with the two question resolution, that the two question approach is that it's confusing. I think, I think it's much better to go with the single question option. It's much more straightforward. And it's, I think it's more in line with how Act thirty-three is supposed to operate. So that's what I would favor. I would favor going with, I guess, option two, the single question ballot proposal.
So I think the single question one is easier to understand. I would, I, I can support both of them, but we have voters up that who may not be very educated on all of this when they have to vote. I, I, I can support both of them, but we have voters out there who may not be very educated on all of this when they have to vote, and I think it would, the single question is more likely to pass than.
20 years?
They're both 20 years.
No, they're not.
There's a 10-year and a 20-year in the first one.
The single question is much more expensive. So, so Kathy, one other thing, so, so first of all, this is gonna take a ton of voter education. The reason why I support the two-question one with, with a maybe operating question and capital question is that, one, we're asking for authorization for fewer funds, we're not asking for more than we need, which in the 20, the single-question one, I do think we're potentially asking for more than we need. And I, I do think that, that the two questions, I, I think it'd be more likely to pass, because it basically gives people the option, 3.75 or a total of 4.5.
But given that they're tie-barred, isn't the last sentence saying, "The authority under this ballot question is effective only if both ballot questions are approved"? I mean, you're really kinda saying, it's all or nothing, so you really are saying, you're, you're really kinda, I mean, so what, what happens if I, a chief's gate, and I say, "I'm gonna approve the 75 mills, and I don't care if the 3.75 isn't approved", and then?
So, so John, you know, that's a good point, so to clarify, because I realize that language isn't clear, the authority under this, under the capital question. Will.
What's, what's the capital question, number one or number two?
The second, the second one. So the authority under, and the way that.
Under, under the 75-mill provision, whatever you call it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that's called the capital question, so the authority under the capital question is effective only if both ballot questions are approved.
Why don't just do the single question? Have, have the flexibility to go up to the 4.5, because the, you know, the two-question one has the 4.5 ceiling as well, and, and you, you calibrate it to cover the costs, you budget for it, you calibrate it to cover the costs in any year.
So people could, so people could do the 3.75, but not the, but, but not the 7.5, and that makes it through.
Yep.
Because that's kind of personnel.
Yep, so they say we don't need a second station.
Yeah, like, give us, give us firefighters, and then give us, you know, facilities, structures.
A second station. And also on the whole, it's less, but Chief, what are your thoughts on it?
You know, it is very complicated, yes, there, there's no question about it.
I'm gonna vote for something on this, I don't, you tell me what to vote for.
You know, I think, as the committee recommended, the two questions, they wanted to separate operating from capital. Obviously, that's their recommendation, and it's this board's.
That's because the governor and the, because the way they wanted to do it, right?
Yeah, they wanted to, they wanted to help control the, the spending.
Celebrator and the governor, I forget what the governor.
Yeah, be just fully responsible.
Yeah.
I guess I would just suggest, or just remind everyone that every year, there is a public hearing to set that rate. These maximums were established, you're not, not actors.
Andy, do you think the two-question one is more confusing to the average voter than the one?
You know, I, I, I'm, I'm sure it could be to some voters, yes. I, I have no doubt that's the case.
It's confusing just talking about it here, with, with board members who are somewhat familiar with the issues. Well, in some cases, very familiar with the issues, and we're all still wrestling with how confusing it is to.
We're not, we're not all wrestling.
No, my thing, my, listen, I'm gonna vote for this tonight.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna vote for one or the other, a, a, and what's gonna be the, the best chance of sharing with the public what it's for, the need for it, and likely to get support?
I have a thought, though, I have to say out loud, guys. Why is the operator one the three-point or whatever? Why is it so much higher than what we've been doing? I understand, though, sincerely, I understand that theory, and you're going to calculate every year.
That's generally attributable to the, to lack of staffing we've had, and the correction, it's personnel cost, we're, we're talking about quite a few more firefighters.
Well, we all know how everybody's been, will be hit this year with a 5% increase in the taxable value. Go home to your tax bills and look at the taxable, take 5% of that that you have, add it to that taxable, and then you'll have to use last year's rates at this point, find out how much money more you're gonna be paying in taxes. Now, we're gonna go to the voters and ask for a lot of money. And I don't, I think it'll be a struggle to get past a vote, I really do, people are not, there's a lot of them that are hurting out there, and they're gonna have to say no. Yes, we need the fire department.
Well, I, I'd like to make the motion and see, and see if we can, like, move this along, because we could talk about this endlessly. I will, I will move the resolution with the single ballot question. I think that's a simpler way of presenting the question to the voters, and I think it's a, a better way for the township on an annual basis to handle these costs, to, to plan for the costs of fire protection, whether it's operating expenses or capital expenses, to do it under this mechanism. So I would make that motion to approve this resolution, the one with the single question.
I'll support.
So we have a motion, Hathaway, and then support from Noel, is there further discussion?
I would say, my concern with this is, I think this is much less likely to pass.
Why?
Because it is asking for much more money, you're asking for 20 years at 4.5, and the reality.
Not to exceed 4.5.
Right, but think about this.
But that's not at 4.5.
I know, but within the 20 years, a lot's gonna change, right? And so, Will, once again, the, the, the value of the two-part question, and there's different ways on the authority, John, we looked at different numbers and things.
No, no.
But, but no, that, but the if-then thing, because what Mike had suggested is, if local proposal number, you know, X doesn't pass, then da-da-da, but here, we don't number.
At the risk of agreeing with you, I think I agree with you. Because on page one, the 3.75 is for 10, so the big one's only for 10.
Yeah.
The little one's for 20, so it makes it look like the big one is for 20.
We're asking for too much money.
I know, I, I mean, I.
And, and this is all we need, and the reason why Mark, the chief, and I came back with a second option was to give you something simpler, right? One question, but the two-question one, I think, is the right one, because it asks, it doesn't ask for more than we need. And Kathy, one thing about the 20-year term, applying that to operating, that's a problem, is because so much is gonna change, think about it, not to exceed 3.75 mil for operating over 10 years, right? We've looked out about 10 years, you know, depending on the growth of this township and everything, we may need to make some changes after 10 years to our operating. Politically, it would be harder to say, okay, we did 4.5 for 20 years, but whoops, at 10 years, at 15 years, we need to adjust that operating. I'd much rather ask a question that I have more confidence in, and I have confidence in that 10-year term for the operating at 3.75. I have no confidence that 3.75 would be enough in 20 years, in fact, I'm quite sure it won't be for operating.
Well, then, you should have a 4.5 ceiling.
No, for the, the 20 years, is what I'm saying, in, in 20 years, for the 20, the reason why I'm more comfortable with the operating term of 10 years, Will, is because the 3.75 or, or, you know, is not gonna be enough operating in year 15 and 20.
So you shouldn't go with this one, which gives you more flexibility.
I don't know that.
But, but I think it asks for too much money, and, and I don't know that 4.5 is enough in 20 years, I don't know what.
Well, nobody knows the future, I, I think this gives a better, the, the single-question option gives the township more flexibility to operate in, into, further into the future.
Last accountability.
No, my, my issue with number two is that, like, damn, that's 4.5 over 20 years, I'm not gonna vote for that. My issue with number one is it says acquisition of apparatus and equipment in the first part, and then we got providing apparatus and equipment, so it, it, that seems a little redundant.
I got an idea there, because I was tripping over that too, John, when we were writing this.
I'm not saying I'm tripping.
But, what about, I mean, this is, I don't know if this is tacky, but if we could italicize, or bold italicize, newly constructed buildings.
I, I think this is a further illustration of how confusing the second part.
So, but you see what I mean, John, that's the distinction.
So.
Because I asked, Andy, Chief, remember, I asked you, I said, why, why do we have any of the acquisition of apparatus and equipment in the first one? So how is that, what, why do we need that in the first question?
So, so that's our normal maintenance, or replacement of apparatus and equipment that we have.
Okay.
Right, and, and, and the second question, it is to build a building and put stuff in there. So, so it's additional equipment that we would have. And, and I think part of the, part of the thing, and this is part of what the committee struggled with, was we have to get the right term to be able to borrow money to build the building without running out of authorization.
Question two makes more sense. More flexibility. I, I think it's, every time we talk about the two, the two-question proposal, it, it illustrates further how confusing it is.
I find it confusing, too.
All right, well, I, I would like to call the roll on the question, see if we have the votes for the single-question resolution.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
I'm gonna say no.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
No.
Flintoff? No. Carrie?
No.
Motion fails.
Got her answer.
To the four.
Answer.
I'd like to make a motion to, I'd like to introduce the resolution, the two-question resolution, and offer a couple of amendments, that under fire services improvement and expansion, there be a subtitle, operating question, and under this, above the second paragraph, a subtitle, capital question.
And that's all lawful to do on the ballots, I'm gonna defer to y'all to do that.
Yeah.
Do all that stuff.
Yeah.
We'll find out. Are they, are these two questions going to be on the same ballot? It's a yes or no on the same ballot?
Yes.
There, there are two yes or no questions, one, the operating question, you vote yes or no, and right below it, the capital question, you vote yes or no.
So there, you could be yes on one and no on one.
Yes.
Two separate issues.
But then if.
And, and the capital question is effective only if both of those go through.
Okay, so if the cap.
Say that again.
The authority under this capital ballot question.
Thank you.
I mean, that's what you mean by it.
Yeah. It's confusing, guys.
That's why we're still working out. But what I wanna say is, I could, I can, you know, with the, the, the local proposal X, you know, is what Mike had had, we just don't happen to do that in Washtenaw County, we don't have numbers for our proposals, so we need to give it a name. So that was the idea of the capital question. And to Jillian's point, it kinda calls out the difference between the two even more clearly. So it would be, just with the subheading, operating question, capital question, the authority under this capital question is effective only if both ballot questions are approved.
I just don't know how, all that extra wording, I think it's, I just.
So, I've seen it done that way before, where, where, I'm sorry, Donna, but, but in the, in different proposals, I've looked at lots and lots of local proposals of how they go, and a lot of times they.
In Michigan?
Yeah, in Washtenaw County.
So the Hathaway one has no.
I have a question here, guys. So this isn't, okay, the authority under this ballot question is effective only if both ballot questions are approved. So number one might be approved, but not number two.
Correct.
That is confusing.
Now, with that, you need the operator, that's the most critical.
And that would go through without the capital.
And it's for fewer years.
Yeah, so there'd be a lot of education, but, but that would be my, I'd offer this resolution with those couple of small.
I'll support that, Flintoff.
Thank you, Riser.
I'm getting along now.
I've been getting along. Thought I was shaving you because you're sleepy.
Don't take that, babe.
Are there any further changes, amendments to the motion? Or to the resolution? In that case, we have, do we have, you moved, do we have a second?
Riser.
Riser, okay, so, moved by Flintoff, support by Riser, please call the roll.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yeah.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 6-0.
Okay.
I will finalize this and transmit it to the county.
We're on to K1, that is the, for the current township retirees, change employee handbook section 34, retiree medical insurance, establish trust, appropriate and authorized funds to continue retiree health benefits for current township retirees. And again, I will turn to our township manager.
This is the two OPEB issues on our agenda, just current retirees. I'd like to first start by saying thanks to Andy, who did a whole lot of work on this. We're very fortunate that he is here and interested in this and great knowledge. This item and the next item, both, we talked about, and it's, it's been an audit finding for some time, and this is an opportunity to, this is a big opportunity here to solve this problem. We're happy to answer questions. My sense is, we, we've talked about it enough that we maybe we're just ready to move on. I mean, I'll tell you, this is.
I would move adoption, I, I.
We can take it one at a time, if we could, John.
Like, like about four for each of them.
So we've got three resolutions on this one, if we could take a moment or two.
I move that we adopt the resolution to continue retiree health benefits and current eligible township retirees.
Support.
So moved by Riser, support by Flintoff, unless there's further questions or discussion, please call roll.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
Want to be gone, John?
I move that we adopt, I'm supportive of these, adopt the MPRS retiree health funding vehicle uniform resolution as presented.
So moved by Riser.
Second.
Second by.
Carrie, Carrie.
It's getting late.
Yeah.
Please call the roll.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 6-0.
And I move that we adopt the resolution, thirdly, to continue to, to continue retiree health benefits for current eligible township retirees, and to comply with PA 202 of 2017, Protecting Local Government Retirement and Benefits Act.
This is the one that says, pick either, either clause above or below.
Yep, that's me, so there's the 20, I, I wanna bring this to the board's attention and ask you to pick one of the two for the result, the one above or below, because we have an option here of funding the 26,504 of the fire from either the fire fund or the general fund, and I'm bringing it to your attention because we've made a commitment not to go below our fund. And I'm bringing it to your attention because we've made a commitment not to go below our fund balance without doing so deliberately. So right now, the blue is our general fund and we're this far above our minimum. And the fire is still right here. So we're at fifty-nine percent of our fire fund. And so the question is, do you wanna take more from the fire fund or do you wanna take that from the general fund? The top one would take it from the fire fund and decrease the fund balance even farther below the minimum fund goal, or the second one would take it from the general fund.
Jessica, I'm sorry, I'm just not seeing this. I have it in my packet. Is it? Where is it?
The fire fund has, they have to take care of their expenses. We've already done a lot of giving.
It's, it's just the way it is. I just wanna be clear that we would be going below what's in our fund, fund balance goal.
For the time, that happens.
Yeah, we're, we're already at fifty-nine percent of where they should be and we're way above where we should be for the general fund. And so I'm just trying to be deliberate.
Think we should take it from the general fund.
Okay. We could.
So is it, would that be below?
That's the one below. And, and Donna, if you wish, we could take a, a quick motion vote just on this one question.
So we can't keep funding other funds issues. We have to deal with the issues. This is no way to do it.
Okay.
So, so you would oppose, you would prefer to take it from the fire fund?
Yes, sir.
And why is that?
And this is gonna come up on the second item.
They're supposed to take care of their business. We've already forgiven one and a half million. That was a loan.
Okay, but this was an obligation that we've known about for a long time, two thousand eighteen.
We've already done a lot for them with moves.
But that is we. I mean, it's all one township wide taxpayer.
Well, I'm, I'm with you, Donna. I would take it from the fire fund.
I'd like to um make, John, can I, you just made a motion for this resolution. John, could I ask if you'd be willing to withdraw that motion?
Yeah, I withdraw that motion.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to um make a motion to choose the second, be it for the resolved clause, taking the twenty-six thousand five hundred and four from the general fund.
So a motion by Flintoff.
Awesome.
Support by Noel to adopt the resolution, the version of the res- resolution that would take money from the general fund as opposed to the fire fund.
Yes. Yeah, I guess that works. We don't have to do them two parts.
Okay, so unless anyone needs further discussion, you can call the roll.
Yeah, though, though I was wondering, well, if, I was actually just trying to just make a decision there cause there may be some people who say no to this, who wanna say yes to the whole thing.
Well, that's true.
So that's what I'd like, could I, could I do it that way, Will?
Sure.
Okay. So, so here's my motion. My motion is just to.
Choose that resolved clause.
Yeah, it's not on the whole resolution. It's just to choose the resolved clause that would appropriate, that we consider the resolved clause that would appropriate the twenty-six thousand from the general fund instead of the fire fund. Do I have your support, Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, so we're calling the roll on that question of that, that resolved clause.
Yeah.
Again.
Twenty-six thousand five hundred and four.
So, so a yes vote is to take the, is to use the resolved clause that would take from the general fund?
Correct.
Okay.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yeah.
Hathaway?
No.
Palmer?
No.
Flintoff? Yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Now, Riser, do you wanna make your original motion?
You said four to zero. Did you mean four to two?
Yeah.
I did, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I just, just point of order.
Do you wanna support the resolution now?
Yes, I would. I, I would.
As amended?
Yes, I, I withdrew my motion, so do I.
You just have to make it again.
I.
You can, if you're, to, you would made the motion to adopt resolution to continue retiree health benefits for current eligible township retirees and to comply with P A two oh two of two thousand seventeen, protecting local government retirement and benefits act.
As amended.
I guess as, as amended. As proposed.
Support.
All right. So moved by Riser, support by Flintoff. All in favor say, wait, I, do, do we need to?
Yeah.
Do a roll call? We need a roll call.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
No.
Flintoff? Yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Resolution adopted five to one.
Okay, it brings us to K two. This is for current township non-union employees to change the employee handbook section thirty-four, retiree medical insurance approved healthcare savings program participation agreement and contribution addendum, appropriate and authorized funds to continue retiree health benefits.
This is more complicated.
No. So.
Best for last. I hope I have a pretty quick and brief explanation for you. During firefighter negotiations that resulted in contracts authorized by this board last June, we changed the retiree healthcare benefit for active employees, specifically those represented by unions in the fire department. Uh, that was a stipend type program where after someone retired with certain years of service and such, they were given a stipend to help offset costs of uh health insurance, uh basically Medicare supplement. Firefighters uh didn't really work that plan, didn't work for them. Um, so we negotiated a different plan. Uh, that plan is more of a defined contribution plan where money goes in from both the employer and the employee on a per paycheck basis. Uh, and then uh the township had what's called an actuarial accrued liability. Uh, that is the amount of money that an actuary determines. Um, and I'll use myself fictitiously as an example. I've got twenty-five years of service here. And the actuary says, well, based on your twenty-five years of service and when you're eligible, this benefit is worth this, so our township needs X amount of dollars in a in a pot of money to pay that benefit once you leave. Uh, for the firefighters, we took the actuary's report and I wanna say it was end of fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Figured the, took the actual accrued liability for each employee and made a contribution equal to that into a uh a basically a savings account for them to use to buy their own insurance when they separate employment. That was done. Um, going forward, after the implementation date, we began making contributions. The employees began making contributions. And that's what this proposal would do for our general employees as well. Uh, folks that and this is only the active folks, the folks that are working today. We're not doing anything different with the retirees uh as proposed. All these employees would now uh change over to the system effective April first. Uh, they would be getting a, a stipend into uh an individual account that they can use to manage their healthcare after they retire, as well as an actuarially determined, uh based on the same data set contribution into that account. Uh, for the folks that don't appear on that record, there was a, I think it was a fifteen hundred dollars for full-time employees per year of service and seven fifty, or part-time per year of service that the township would make uh as a contribution. I, I mentioned this when we signed the firefighter's contract, but this is a win-win for both parties. Um, the township, uh, you're you authorize this tonight, we're P A two oh two compliant. Um, and we stopped accruing liability for these benefits. And the employees now have flexibility. Um, if I'm, uh, you know, I'm, say I'm sixty-two and I'm in, I'm in the office and I'm thinking, well, you know, I've got enough money to retire, but that healthcare is gonna really get me. I've got a pot of money that I can say, yeah, maybe I'll retire a year or two early because that pot of money can cover my healthcare costs.
And the one other change is we're able to um propose expanding it to permanent part-time instead of just full-time. And that's in the first resolution there because um it's not a significant cost to the township. It's just the three and a half percent go forward.
I hope I covered everything you expected me to do so.
I also just wanna state, Donna, Will, and I obviously have a clear financial interest in the passage of this. So I wanna put that out there on the record. Also note, we have six people here tonight and if all three of us were to refuse ourselves, we wouldn't be able to move this forward. So I just wanna put that on the record um there and just um see if, unless anybody has any objection, we would participate in the vote, but I wanna put that out there.
I think you have to participate in the vote.
Okay.
Well, I vote for the employees, unfortunate, unfortunate, whatever your perception is. I haven't fallen with this list. I don't vote for me.
Exactly. I know, Donna.
Mark, this came to us kinda from you and, and, and Andrew and running it through the, the budget folks and the finance, right?
Yeah, and our attorneys.
Yeah, right. I mean, we're, I mean, I'm gonna, is there any reason I shouldn't move adoption of all four of these? Is there any bullying, is there any?
Well, there's the other, the part that, again, above and below, right? One of those.
No, cause this one's not fine.
Yeah.
Do we, do we need to do the same choice?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because this is spread across several funds, but, but yeah, I mean, this is rock solid. And I have to say Dickinson, right? Our employment attorneys were awesome on this.
So can I move to adopt the resolution to continue retiree health benefits for current eligible township employees?
Support.
Okay, moved by Riser, support by Flintoff. Please call the roll.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yep.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Resolution adopted six oh.
I would also move to adopt the M E R S, the MERS Healthcare Savings Program Participation Agreement.
Support.
So moved by Riser, support by Flintoff. Please call the roll.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser? Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Resolution adopted six oh.
So do we want someone to move the resolution clause again so we can choose?
Well, the next one is the contribution addendum.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped ahead.
And that's where we're actually committing to putting all that money in.
So I, I move we adopt the contribution addendum for the MERS Healthcare Savings Program Participation Agreement.
Support.
Okay, moved by Riser, support by Flintoff. Please call the roll.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Resolution adopted six oh.
Now we're on the one where we have to choose either A or B. Actually, based on our earlier um action, I think I would move the resolution with the appropriation coming from the general fund rather than the fire fund.
Okay, so um I would support that.
Just to keep things moving.
It's below, right?
So.
Yes.
That's the resolution to fund the retiree health benefits for current eligible township employees and to comply with P A two oh two of two thousand seventeen, protecting local government retirement benefits act. From the amendment, Will?
That's the, yes, that's the motion. That's the specific motion.
And I support that with the, the appropriation from the general fund.
Okay, so moved by Hathaway, support by Flintoff. Please call a roll.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser? Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
No.
Flintoff? Yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Resolution adopted five to one.
Now we are skipping to K four because we already dealt in three.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Good evening. That brings us to Park Road, non-motorized pathway and pedestrian improvements, conceptual engineering. And here is what Matt has been waiting for.
Sorry, Matt.
Yep, you're fine.
Would you like to introduce this agenda item?
Yeah, or Mark, Ken, I, we have a proposal dated February eighth. Um, really what this is, is conceptual engineering. This is really the work the township needs to do to find out if this is a, a project or not. Um, I know you guys have talked a lot. I've heard a lot of public comment about how to fund this and those are all valid concerns, but right now, and you also accepted grant money um towards this. But right now, this is a complicated little segment of road. Um, there's some drainage issues that affect both Arbor Point, Country French, as well as the neighbors across the road at uh Park Grove. There's um a non-motorized that needs to be put in there. There's trees, there's overhead utilities, there's underground utilities. So there's a lot to think about and this isn't the development of a full-blown plan set that would go out to bid. This is really just understanding, getting the topographic survey, understanding the drainage, figuring out the soils beneath to really give the township board some background information and a really good solid engineer's estimate that really can encompass like, what is this project? Is this a two million dollar project, a two point five million dollar project, a one point five million dollar project? There's a lot of moving pieces and a lot of things to understand. Um, we did, when writing this, reach out to the road commission. And also I know the Trailwoods folks did their portion out towards Stabler. That actually is a lot simpler section because they have open ditch and everything drains to the west. This segment drains both to the west and to the east. And then when we talk to the road commission too, they're looking for when and if this does get paved, they wanna box span signal at Park and Zeb, which is kind of a big deal. I mean, that right there alone is a two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollar thing. So really what this is, is kinda getting the township information and sets you up to design this. Whether you build it now or build it ten years from now, this really is pro limit, this is the first step. So whether you guys wanna proceed with it or not, it's really your call. We were asked by Mark to prepare this proposal. We did. It's not a small fee, but it gets you pointed in the right direction to take this when you do decide to move forward uh to final engineering, which would probably be another, you know, ninety to a hundred thousand. Cause we're anticipating this is a two million dollar plus project.
Right. Hey, thank you, Matt. And I'm sorry that you've waited so long and I'm glad that you're comfortable enough with us to helpfully interrupt us earlier.
Yeah.
Cause that was helpful. Um, so task five on your scope says prepare conceptual cost estimate. I'm, I, I'm not trying to put you in the, on this, on the spot at all, but I mean, my I am, I am wondering, is there a way we could get a fair range of what this project might cost without doing forty percent of the conceptual engineering?
Yeah, I mean, the range, right now, I kind of alluded to it. It's between two, it's between two and three million.
Between two and three million? Yeah, okay. Thank you, Matt. And, and that's, and not to hold you to it, I'm just trying to think, you know, is there possibly money for this for two to three million? And, and I, I don't know of any um without a new, you know, road millage or something.
Yeah, the, the, the biggest unknown, the paving, the pathway, the signal, that's easy. It's the drainage. The drainage is a big deal. You guys have heard from the Arbor Groves folks or the people opposed to the Arbor Groves. A lot of this drainage from Park Road goes that way. And honestly, if you were to pave this and you were just to not think about how to properly design this, that would exacerbate that issue. There's a potential that putting in a storm water system that takes this drainage away and further to the east across Zeb Road and, and potentially all the way down to the U of M Lake drain could substantially help the folks that are having drainage problems. That's, that's all outlined very briefly, but basically that's what the drainage study is. It really would identify how to resolve not only the drainage for this project, but potentially alleviate that culvert that goes under Zeb that's pretty much full. That causes a lot of the issues right now that the neighbors are seeing. So this is an important project. It's something that the township needs to do. It's just a matter of, do you have the funds and where's it coming from? And that.
And Matt, is there, is, is, I know you can't say definitively, but it sounds, you said this is a complicated stretch of road. Do you know anything about why the road commission hasn't done this before? I mean, do you imagine it's because of these reasons? Because it's so thorny and expensive?
No, because the road commission cannot see the roads on their own. So it has to be a, a match.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, I don't think this is a primary either. It's not a primary road, so they wouldn't improve it unless there was a road improvement agreement or some kind of thing. I think, you know, if the road commission. thing. I think, you know, if the road commission was doing what they did today.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, what Trailwoods, when Country French and Arbor, Arbor Point went in, they would have made that be paved. But that was a long time ago, so.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Well, I would move the model motion to accept the proposal from OHM advisors for the Park Road Paving and Pathway Improvements Conceptual Engineering Services Proposal Subject to Review by Township Attorney at a cost not to exceed ninety-five thousand from the twenty twenty-two MEDC Grant Funds for the Park Road Project to be received from the state of Michigan in twenty twenty-three and placed in the Parks and Pathways Fund two oh eight seven five three. Is there support?
Friendly amendment, oh, sorry.
Is there support?
Riser.
Okay, so move by Hathaway, support by Riser, and what is your suggestion?
Friendly amendment would be from the state of Michigan and this fiscal year end twenty-four, I assume, coming in next budget year, fiscal year end twenty-four and budgeted as revenue in, and I would propose, at this point, we just put it in one oh one. Because it, this, we don't know where this is going, you know, this is road path culvert, what, and I, I don't want to start complicating Anna's budget more than we need to. So it would be from the state of Michigan and fiscal year end twenty-four and budgeted as revenue in one oh one.
If it's specific for a road project, would it be more advisable to set up a, like we've done with other road SADs?
You know, that's a good point, Donna. I, I looked at that real quick, I didn't have a chance to get an answer. Maybe tonight we could just say to one oh one or other fund if more appropriate.
Can we say the fund?
You could have a better track if you kept it in a four hundred.
Yeah, exactly, and that whole chart.
Do we have to say where it's placed?
Can't we just do a period after a park road project period? And then we know it's to receive from the state of Michigan, we know where the money's coming from.
That's fine.
From the park road project period?
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
I would accept that.
Yeah, that, that eliminates the complication I was saying.
I was just trying to, you know, get all the details that are.
No, 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 I like details.
Okay, so we don't have to call the question, we could just call the roll.
Okay.
Yes.
Riser, yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, no.
Carrie?
No.
Motion passes four to two. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
You too.
Or morning.
Yep, we're there.
Say that this was, this part was not in my packet and it also says that the road advisory committee recommended the engineering and when did that happen?
Recommended engineering, I was saying, I was sitting in the meeting when the road advisory committee voted to recommend having engineering done on that section of Park Road.
When was that?
A meeting where John Riser and I were sitting in the back. Whatever meeting that was, John.
Remember, it coming up, but I don't know the date for the.
I think Bob wrote and brought it up. But in any case, we are now at item K five, which is community projects and this is a discussion only item and
It's time of the essence, can we move to postpone this?
Well, I guess there's no action here, so as long as everyone's comfortable with Kathy and I proceeding as we have been, we can, we can postpone this discussion to another meeting.
So there's a March twentieth deadline, anybody want to speak to that briefly? What's the plan for that?
We are working with GCSI and using materials that were prepared with chief hood to try and advance an application for federal funding for the second fire station and the equipment thereof.
Okay. And the chief's engaged?
Yeah.
Great.
So, okay, so we'll set that aside then, if, if there's no objection. And the only other item remaining is G three, which was moved from the consent agenda by trustee Noel, so trustee Noel, you're what, what's your concern?
I was concerned about some of the statements that were made in the supervisor's report. I thought that they were, the, the statements about the general fund were misleading and confusing. So I wanted to see a general description of all of the sources of revenue in the general fund and then comments about the one point three million that comes in from SIO's general millage, rather than the way you had it worded, because it was it gives the impression that there are major problems when in fact, as we heard tonight, in terms of SIO's overall balances maintained in the general fund, we're doing a fairly good job. I mean, we're at the, what, ninety-eighth percentile, he said. So I would reword that part. And.
So you'd like me to go back and rewrite this and then bring it back to a future meeting?
So, so Kathy, are you talking about the, the one point three million when the state shared revenue is a major source to just say?
Yes.
One of. So Will, I think you have that in there, you say there are other sources of general fund revenue.
But you start out by saying it's the one, we have the one point three million and I would like to see a sentence describing all of the sources of revenue for the general fund as the lead sentence in that paragraph. And then go on about the comments about the one point three million from SIO's general millage. I mean, that general millage, what does it contribute, twenty-five percent of the money in the general fund or about that?
Can I suggest that this is actually not the place to have this discussion? That probably when you got this coming to me and talking with me about it, you know, just the two of us and trying to work out whatever your concerns are about how I wrote my article would have been more productive than trying to talk it through in the board meeting.
Well, well, can I suggest that you get the packets out on time? So we don't have to do a lot of last minute reading on Saturday and Sunday. And then there's time to have those discussions.
Well, yeah, but you and I didn't have, you and I have talked since then.
So I want to, but I hadn't read all of the packet. I, I have, I have a suggestion, I have a suggestion. So, and I, I hear you Kathy, because I it was misleading because it, it seems to make it look like we bring in one point three million, but we have expenditures of four point two million. But, but the other section, and this is the advantage of it being the late hour, is we could update it to make it a little more up, up to date. In the second column, you know, we, we could say, you know, that instead of, Will, instead of the funding employee retirement health cost, we could say the township fully funded employee retirement health costs through significant one-time expenditures from the general fund and other funds.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to move on to page three after we're done with page one.
No, 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 I mean, and, and I'm just saying, and Will, we could, the, the thing, the thing here is you say that over the coming weeks and months, your board of trustees will discuss whether and how to establish dedicated revenue streams for both fire and police services. Tonight, we just passed a millet, we just put on the ballot, something for fire, so why don't we just say that instead of saying the board is going to talk about?
Move on to page three after we're done talking about page one. How late do you want to stay here nitpicking each other's articles?
I don't think this is, it's just when we say the board of trustees is going to consider a dedicated source of police and fire when we've just.
Well, I like the way that you talk about finding staff in your article, so I'd like to, we're, we're going to spend some time talking about that.
I think there should be.
After we're done modifying my test.
So I think you guys should have pretty carte blanche as to what you say, we better have a damn good reason for telling you, Jessica, or you, Will, what you should or shouldn't write in there.
Yeah.
So, so I, 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 I I, I'm, I would have voted to approve, and I thank Mary Gillis for her work on this, I would have voted to approve it. We might not agree what Will likes and Will might not agree with what you like, but it's your prerogative to write your own message to the extent that we're going to be discussing it, if Will brings it up, then we're going to discuss it. It might not go anywhere, but, but.
You mean, so when, John, I'm trying to seek understanding here, so when you, when you.
No, the understanding is he gets to say what he wants generally and you get to say what you want.
So when he says what the board of trustees will be doing, you're comfortable with that?
No, because it's not, it's, it's, no, he can't say what, he can't say what we're doing.
He says over the coming weeks and months, your board of trustees will discuss whether and how to establish dedicated revenue streams for both fire and police.
And if he puts it on the agenda, then we will be discussing it. It might not go anywhere, but he, he, he controls the agenda, he gets to determine what we discuss, it might not, like I say, we might not support him.
So you're just not putting much meaning to these words.
Will residents?
That's my concern. I understand how you put it that way. I, I understand how you could be, I mean, I get your perspective.
Like, like, I'm not fly specking what you say.
Right.
Mary Gillis worked on this extensively, in fact, she took first crack at writing, rewriting this draft and I just tinkered with it after she was done. So
Right.
This is her proposed newsletter. If you want to take it up with Mary Gillis, I guess you can.
No, 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 this is, look, look, I mean, I'm not gonna, this is not Mary's, Mary's role, I mean, I mean, saying saying things that, you know, what we're going to be discussing, that we receive a subsidy of three hundred thousand. I mean, some of this stuff is just factually incorrect. That, that's all, Will, it's not the opinions, your opinions are yours and I respect that.
Okay, so I would make the motion to approve the attached issue of the SIO Township Newsletter as presented. Is there a second?
I'll support it.
Okay, so, so we have motion by Hathaway, support by Palmer, please call the roll.
Noel?
No.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, no. Carrie?
No.
Motion fails three, three.
All right, so we were not putting forth a newsletter. We are now moving on to.
If you and I work it out over the next week.
That would be a service.
All right, I'll be looking at yours too.
Well, no, Will, Will, please.
Well, it's fair game, it's certainly fair game.
Will, anybody, please.
Yeah.
Page three, speak up.
No, no, we're not doing it now.
Will, speak up.
We're moving on to public comment. This is the time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the board of trustees. Mr. Riser will be our timekeeper.
Sure. Number one.
Kathleen, would you like to speak again? Is there anyone participating remotely who would like to speak?
Yeah, am I, am I up as Kathleen, upper?
You're up.
I wanted to thank you for staying so late and finishing and, but I wish I also wish that the agendas were maybe smaller so that you guys could all have a good discussion and I, I also want to thank whoever's decision it was about, there's two young men in my neighborhood who who I want to recommend, I'll talk to Mary Gillis about an award, there's some little blip I read, I read over the newsletter that was on the agenda package and so I'll call her, but maybe sometimes these run so long and to get a good discussion, maybe the agenda shouldn't be quite as full. But anyway, thank you very much and thanks for the budget thing and looking at different things, it's late, thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
Thanks, Jonathan, you're up and all of my Rob patents.
I'll be brief, yeah, thank you, I'll be brief. Was gonna say thank you very much for the excellent meeting and, and overall it was, but man, that the ending here, come on, Will. It doesn't have to be so confrontory, people are just trying to do their jobs. You've sprung quite a few last minute surprises on others in your past here, so just doesn't seem very fair to be getting all up in arms about the subject, but I do appreciate you all staying here late and mostly being civil today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for staying late and thank you Terry Suave for returning to run the Zoom.
You're here.
It has been run more professionally tonight than it has been in months, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Derek.
I would like to ask the, the trustees, when they see the agenda come out and they see that important discussion items like the last four that you had tonight and when we have the fire chief wait five hours and fifteen minutes and the parks chief wait three and a half hours, could we please, as a, as a, just a common courtesy, could we please get their interaction with the board scheduled for the first part of the board meeting so that they're not here for five and a half hours? And again, thank you all for staying so long.
Thank you.
That it? Motion to adjourn?
Opposed.
Opposed?
Support, support.
All those in favor say aye, aye, those opposed, we are adjourned.
And I really want to thank Terry Suave, he's been offering, stepped in, I think may have, hopefully he can roll in a little late tomorrow, but.